Yes, the printer doesn't like them, so I have to read it real quick. Trying to print it from the wrong tray. And I was like, no. Well, what was the thing where I wanted?
Being as it's nine thirty, we are going to call this workshop to order. Our first order of business is Pops and Associates, and are they on?
Do not see them yet. I did send them a reminder this morning.
You want to throw him up on a pen?
If he's there, he doesn't have a picture.
Oh, he doesn't. Good morning, Mr. Kennedy.
Good morning. Yeah, I don't have a picture. I'm sorry. My service is pretty rough this morning. And if I give you my picture, then you can't really hear me. And, you know, it's just a bad deal.
Well, we can hear you just fine, so.
Fantastic. Well, you might not like that in the end. You never know.
Tell me good information, and I will.
Well, I can give you good information. How about this? I'll kind of start with what I tried to do this week in my report was specifically talk about some things here going forward that, you know, aren't necessarily apparent. And also highlight some bills and some ideas that aren't necessarily in the forefront and obviously aren't entire state issues or maybe entire state issues, but other areas care a little bit more than some. So the first thing I'll tell you is Friday on the Senate State Government and Elections at ten thirty is going to be a heck of a fun committee to watch. Either that or it'll melt your brain, one of the two. But they're going to talk about concerning legislative oversight of the gubernatorial powers. That's the bill where they want to basically bring back and review every ninety days state of emergency or declarations by the governor. I've had some questions on both sides of that. You know, I mean, what does this do in terms of FEMA money and how does it work? Realistically, I think it's just oversight. They just want to say, you know, are we going down the right path? The second one is going to be fifty-eight forty-three. This is a kind of a, I'm getting really two sides of this one, too. It's making it unlawful for public officials and candidates to knowingly make false statements and claims regarding election processes or results within the state. You know, on this one, I'm not an attorney, but personally, I think there's a, you know, First Amendment constitutional issue with this one. And second, it seems like there's a bit of a scope issue. It's interesting that they don't want you politicians, as bad as you are, just don't lie about the elections. You can lie about anything else, but just the elections. That's all we care about. So I think that this is gonna, if this bill goes forward at all, you're definitely going to see those two challenges come up. In full disclosure, I have some counties that are saying, well, you know, this really isn't that bad of an idea. How is it bad that we're going to tell people they can't lie about these things? So my hands are kind of tied on this one. If there's something specifically you guys would like me to sign in on or comment on or work to do on it, I can certainly do that. But in terms of all the rural counties, you do not all agree. The other one, a couple other voting things here, just voter confidence and ballot voter pamphlet information stuff. Really interesting one is they think we might need a clean car authority for a new state government agency. That one will be, I don't know. I don't think we need another state agency. So in terms of those, I really like maybe some feedback, you know, on the fifty-eight forty-three, where you guys stand on that one, what your thoughts are. My advice right now on any of these, tell the first cutoff, stay away from it. And that kind of leads me into the general sentiment that I wanted to convey, you know, being an election year, being that last year, really interesting, you know, we've talked about it in order to get the budgets passed, minority-majority leadership in both houses came together, compromises were made. The Democrats gave the Republicans some things they wanted. And then when the bills, bills went to the governor's desk, he basically vetoed most, if not all, those compromises. So this year in the end game, it could be really interesting. You know, if I was in Republican leadership, I'd probably be looking at my Democratic counterparts and saying, what, what reason do I have to compromise with you? You know, what reason do we have to compromise our position at all? Because your governor, after we made our deals last year, just vetoed everything. So that's definitely going to play out, you know, obviously in the end of session. But something to keep in mind right now, and the fact that this is an election year, and we've got quite a few bills that are, you know, hey, look what I tried to do. I did what I said I'd do. And, you know, please elect me again, kind of thing. A lot is going to die coming into next Thursday. We'll have a much more clear picture after that first policy cutoff on the third. There were a couple of bills that I thought were interesting, and those are the ones I listed below the main line. And just a little bit of, I guess, background on these, I'm going to loop nineteen twenty-one, which is the Pilt Bill for the Renewable Energy Personal Property Tax side of things. And then micro trenching is seventeen twenty-two. It's been really interesting on these two bills. They're completely different in terms of what they address, but how the trajectory has gone here. They are specifically right now, they think you got a deal, you think you got something worked out. You hear that there's a possible substitute or good amendments. And then all of a sudden, they say, oh, no, we're just going to run it how it is. Let's see what happens in committee. So whatever's going on in the background on both of these and quite a few others, but these two we care about, we're just kind of looking at it going, we have no idea. We're told one thing one day, and the next day we find out it's not true. Or they do something to the opposite effect. You know, and as it stands right now, you know, the Renewable Energy Pilt nineteen twenty-one, we're not really okay with. And seventeen twenty-two, the micro trenching, definitely not okay with because that one would compel you to allow utility installer just to put a trench twelve inches deep, kind of wherever they want in your right of way, while still exempting the state right of ways. So, you know, there's some questions there. Couple comments on the fifty-seven twenty-seven and eighteen thirty-eight. That's the Protecting, Restoring, Maintaining Habitat for Salmon Recovery. Really talking about the riparian areas. This bill, if you watch the committee hearing, is probably, could be the most devastating bill for rural agriculture, I mean, just industry, anybody who comes anywhere near a river stream, anything like that in the rural areas in the state. And the bill really pits the tribes, salmon fishermen, and anybody along those lines, environmentalists usually, against the farmers, agricultural producers, anybody upstream. And the one positive in this, this bill that we did see come out of it from the testimony really specifically was almost everybody in the con position opposed to this said, look, if you would just fund VSP, you're supposed to, Mr. State. We would be in a lot better shape, and this bill would not even be necessary. The number two point on this one that I think was absolutely fantastic, somebody asked the sponsor, is there any actual scientific study that you can point to that suggests that this might actually help the fish? The answer to that was kind of a confused, soft no. I don't want to say no. And so realistically, you know, this could be a best sciences thing. This could be a, you know, you're going to kill businesses in the rural areas and really harm the farmer. So don't see this one necessarily going forward at all how it is. Being it's an election year, this one's pretty gnarly bill to try and handle in a short session. So the other two I threw in here, nineteen forty-one, which is prohibiting active shooter scenarios for school safety-related drills, and nineteen seventy-three concerning recording of school board meetings. Not necessarily, those two aren't necessarily something that, you know, as county commissioners, you want to chime in on. However, definitely, you know, in the rural areas, parents do tend to be a little bit more engaged in the school and what their kids are doing. So these are a couple of things that maybe your school board might want to hear about or something along those lines. And then the one I kind of jumped over, fifty-nine oh-one, it's a tax credit that applies to counties. Oh, and I put the little arrow the wrong way. It's less than six hundred and fifty thousand in population. There's a tax credit that would be available for anybody installing a warehouse of a hundred thousand feet or more, especially in the grain industry. This is a big one. It could apply to the tree fruit as well. So long story short, what we're doing right now, and I guess I would reiterate here on this Friday hearing, my advice to everybody is stay quiet. Let's see what happens. I don't know that it's worth trying to get out in front of any of this stuff or anything until we know what's going to happen with it, because it could play out really interestingly. So that's kind of what I've got for this week. Is there anything you guys are looking at? Any input, thoughts, feelings, concerns, comments, any bills specifically that you've been watching? Obviously, I can mention them all.
My question is, I'm trying to look it up, on fifty-nine oh-one, for large warehouses. I'm thinking more like the Amazon warehouses that are getting built low lows and all that on the west side and also on the east side. Does that eliminate the deferred taxes for the counties as well, or is it just the state portion?
No, that's an interesting question. It's scheduled for a hearing later this week. It's going to be on Thursday. I have not heard about or talked about the Amazon side of things. That's a good question. I'm going to have to ask.
And I guess from my perspective, it's, you know, if the state wants to pass all these tax credits, tax deferrals, go ahead and pass it, but make it optional for us. Because the state just taking the dollars away from us, you know, that's just a taking.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely, I don't know what they're trying, what the intent would be there, trying to get incentivize these larger businesses, the warehouses to come in. I had the Amazon question, though. Oh, that's, that's a good one. I will follow up on that and get back to you.
Yeah, as far as I follow up, the fifty-seven twenty-seven, eighteen thirty-eight, the riparian bill. And I know you were on the, I know you were on the lunch during meeting on Friday. And that's, I mean, one thing I will say about this bill is it has almost unified, universally unified counties in the opposition to it. It's not even west side counties because of the, I mean, there are, in many ways, there's as many, if not even worse, impacts from this bill on the west side of the mountain. So it's kind of a unique situation where I haven't, it's rare that you see such uniformity of opposition when it comes to counties. There's a few outlier county council, you know, there was a couple from, you know, one from Snohomish and one from King, but universally folks. So I, and I would, I would reiterate your advice to kind of wait and see. As far as a lot of this stuff, not necessarily this one, but until cut off because most of this stuff just dies its own death. So kind of keep your powder dry.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly it. You know, and I will say, you know, I think that Paul Jewell at WASCAC is taking a very good line on this. You know, you've got all of your agricultural community saying, hey, let us do VSP, fund it. You know, you're going to kill our businesses. And Paul's position on it, you know, is looking specifically at implementation from a county level and how difficult, inconsistent, and basically it's, nothing's impossible, but I mean, in terms, it's pretty much impossible.
Right. And I do appreciate that his approach is more the, let's not get into the policy because that will be a little more divisive with the kind of the caucus. But let's just, I mean, this needs to die just from a technical implementation. It's really unimplementable. So whether you support or don't support the policy, it's really irrelevant. We never, we never even need to get to that fight. Because that, that would be a little, there may be more of a fight in the family over that.
Yeah, exactly. And so that's, I think that's important to note that I think it's nice to see WASCAC take that approach. And if it does move forward, you know, you guys can, can kind of reiterate, hey, we can't implement it, but look at our constituency. You know, this is, this will kill our county. So definitely something to make note of and, and. So is there anything else that you guys see that you want to, want to watch, anything I can do for you? Or are you guys okay for the moment?
Dr. McClair? Yeah, I've got a couple of bills. Looking at the data center tax incentives, speaking of those, last session, Senate Bill fifty-two sixty-two made it through the Senate. And this year, I guess it's just sitting there, but there was a bill introduced in the House, eighteen forty-six, by Bergen Rommel. Hasn't been scheduled for a hearing yet. But the eighteen forty-six adds stuff related to labor union agreements, you know, that energy requirements, that requirements relative to data center design. I have heard that the R side of the aisle is not happy with that in terms of the, you know, the project labor agreements because it's small communities, we just don't have, you know, that should be jobs to the other side. But do you know if either one of these is going to move or?
Um, so the eighteen forty-six is going to be a tough one. Their sponsors, Bergen and Rommel, I, it doesn't seem to be a huge priority. You know, the, yeah, I, it doesn't, doesn't seem to be a huge priority. How about that on either side? You know, the fifty-two sixty-two was a bipartisan one. I can talk to Senator Warnock, would probably be, she's the, obviously the only R on that one. I will ask her on that, and I'll get back to you.
Yeah, there are places in the state where there are data centers prospects that this is a meaningful thing.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll look at that one and see what they're possibly going to do with it. Let me see if fourteen fifty-nine has any chance of, they're not going to. They've got the companion to fifty-two sixty-two, fourteen fifty-nine. You know, that one doesn't seem to be the vehicle they're, they're going to use. So I'll take this with Warnock and then get back with you guys and see what, what we might be able to do.
Thank you.
All righty.
And I'm also, I'm looking at fifty-nine oh-one, section three A. It says, a person claiming an exemption from state tax in the form of a remittance under this section must pay the tax imposed by R C W eighty-two oh eight oh two zero. But it says state tax. Does that, does the term state tax also work the county portion?
We're going to ask about that.
And it also shows, says it's for distribution centers as well. So to me, it seems like our, in essence, an exemption for all the big companies, you know, that are building these massive distribution centers.
Yeah, well, I mean, we know that, like you mentioned, Amazon is coming in and they're, shoot, they're over now. They got those big distribution centers all over. So, yeah. Question I will be asking.
Yeah, I don't see a whole lot of new grain elevators being built as we're not making more plans. We're not here again.
Yeah.
So, so what is this really?
Well, that'd be interesting. So does, does a warehouse count as a new grain pile? I don't know, you know, so I don't think that that's going to be something, you know, most of the grain outfits out there consolidated now to the point where, you know, they've got shared assets, and they got a pretty smooth operation.
It says for, it's even for warehouses, distribution centers, and grain.
Yep.
You know what? It's really benefiting.
Yeah, you had to put the grain elevators in there, right? Just in case.
Just in case there's one.
I don't remember the last time a flat house was built. I remember the ones that get tore down. So.
Okay, I don't begin my life. Commissioner Christopher?
Other than just to, I guess I would say echo on, but I hope most of these bills not die a slow painful death, but a quick miserable death. Because there's just some really bad ones in there. But other than that, just wait and see, I guess.
And the only other thing, yes, is I know that our bill for the Hoover Bridge is set for executive session on Thursday.
Yes, sir.
Any help we can get getting it through rules would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. And that's fifty-five fifty-eight. So we will start those conversations here as soon as we can.
All right. Anything else, gentlemen?
Other than for you, I was going to draft you, I'm supposed to draft you a letter on eighteen thirty-eight. Do you want me to hold fire on that?
Are you, are you still thinking that it's going to get passed out of committee? Is that?
On which one? On the eighteen thirty? You know, I, I don't know. I, they may pass it out a committee to try and hash it out and then run a bunch of amendments on the floor. I don't know. Honestly, on that one, I really do think that you probably want to wait till after next Thursday on eighteen thirty-eight and fifty-seven twenty-seven. See which moves and if they move, I, I mean, honestly, it's just bad policy. I don't know how they can change this other than to scrap the bill and say, hey, fund VSP.
That's really the only answer. That's the only.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, this, this kind of thing, this is how you get everybody unelected, is pass something like this and start taking people's property, saying you can't touch the water. I mean, you want to see big federal dollars come in and levy against you, the DNC, here you go. So I don't know that they're going to do it. I, I just say, wait, let's not expend any political capital this early in the game on a bill like this.
So, so you think that possibly the governor requested this legislation to appease the tribes, knowing that it was going to die?
It's entirely possible, but knowing him, he probably thinks.
Going to go?
What's your other bill that's really bad related to it or going to?
Yeah.
What's your, what's your sentiment on the bills about the governor's executive powers on emergencies? Are you seeing people, senators on the left saying that this is, we need to rein this in?
Well, so it was a Democrat-sponsored bill, which tells me it has legs. And it's one of those bills, like, how do you vote against this kind of bill, right? Ninety days, it's, you're not impeding the governor's ability to declare a state of emergency. It's just a review every ninety days, make sure you're doing stuff the way you should be doing. Is what you're doing making an impact in a positive way? You know, so I mean, it's really hard to vote against. I think it's going to probably go. And, you know, the sentiment just in general is, wow, I wish it was thirty days. But at this point, let's take a note out of the playbook here from the other side and get the policy in place. And then, you know, truncate that timetable in future years, you know, take it from ninety to sixty and then to thirty and ten. I don't know.
Well, it'll, it'll be interesting to see where the, where the Pilt goes as well. But I guess for direction, Director McClair, I'm fine with holding on. Think about what you're going to say, but.
Okay. Maybe we, a non-issue, we'll celebrate.
Yeah.
Yeah. While the wakeboard has funeral.
All I could get down was a primal scream.
Oh, man.
All right. I have nothing else. Mr. Kennedy?
All right.
All right. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you very much. We'll chat here again. And as always, call or email anytime. I'll be available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We've got six minutes, is there anything? Commissioner Christopher, anything on your list you want to talk about before you fall asleep?
Oh, I can give you guys kind of an update. House Bill eighteen seventy-one, which was Representative Clicker's moratorium on FSEC. Testimony on that was this morning. I testified on behalf of myself. Amanda McKinney testified on behalf of Yakima County. Another gentleman testified on behalf of Benton County. Dave Barta testified. All in favor of enacting that moratorium on FSEC, why they do some long-range studies. And it's an interesting, it's kind of an interesting deal because that had governments that cite green energy projects stating, you know, cost method of accounting. And, you know, maybe the, the west side of the state should subsidize, you know, our counties for doing these things and that kind of stuff. But then right after that hearing was eighteen twelve, which is the governor's recommendation for streamlining FSEC even farther, which takes some of the public hearings out of play and gives you even less oversight and control. And that had twenty people testifying, all the climate change people and all the unions and all the green energy companies. And so it, you could definitely see a difference of opinion based off which side of the mountain you're on. And it's, it's kind of frustrating, but that's where those two will both end. I do have a quickie update on the Pilt Bill. So the testimony on that one, Steve Ewing from Department of Revenue commented that he doesn't like the cost trend table method of taxation. And this is Department of Revenue that doesn't like the cost trend table method of taxation? So God, maybe there's hope. He also thinks freezing assessments for twenty years can pose constitutional concerns. In section three creates exemptions that could eliminate the levies of junior taxing districts. WASCAC testified in general support, which I'm still confused by. Steve Drew with the County Assessors Association was against the Pilt Bill. So hopefully, if they continue it, I think it has promise, but boy, do they have some things to work out. So I'd rather them wait than pass something that's a bad bill.
Assessors Association was opposed, but WASCAC was in favor?
WASCAC testified in general support.
Well, well, it'll be interesting. I think my guess, they're going to say there's more to it. All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right. We have one bid opening today, and that's for Corky at one thirty.
I'm going to rewire this.
It's every five minutes.
Yeah, it's every five minutes. It used to be like half hour.
So coming this next weekend, it's been postponed two weeks because of COVID. But the lighting control people are coming and fixing all this stuff.
Okay.
So, yeah, it was supposed to happen a couple of weeks ago.
I thought maybe it was like our well listing, like. Actually reduced our health wellness, yeah, the costs or whatever. On the insurance, because you have to walk to.
Pretty soon, it's actually, this switch does go to these. It's the one down the hall.
Downstairs.
Downstairs, yeah, there you really, all lights, but just downstairs. So it should be.
Okay.
It better be. So bid opening today at one thirty for Corky, so we'll.
I'm hoping.
Yeah, we're excited to see the results.
How many did we get? Or is it? How many did we get? Or is, is it, do they still have time?
Yeah, they won't usually turn them until right before the. Yeah, but that's.
They'll be out of the park.
Yes.
Who's there?
So we have a few items on the consent agenda. Um, so item number six is a resolution to, uh. Start working on projects, all the new projects that we need to start on design are listed. Started and start working on those officially that are on the six year annual. Item number seven is the, uh, so every, this is one of our crab reports. So it's authorization. Digital certification for county road administration for the levy certification. Yeah, that's due on the first of February, so we have to send it to electronic. Item number eight, um, is a notice each year we have to post or publish what we anticipate spending. On capital construction with county forces. And our limit is about eight hundred and fifteen, eight fifteen. And, uh, this year we don't have as much in previous years we've had and posted that limit. Try to. But it just depends on the projects that we have. Item number nine, uh, is so to obligate that one point five million dollar appropriation. That Senator King got us for Courtney Road, we have. Respect this is item number nine and the authorization to spend construction funding is number ten. Those are required, they'll delay us from awarding to, you know. So that could be, they say twenty days, we're not sure if that's calendar days or working days, so we'll see.
Since this is a CD carry of the orange, orange commission. I just told me a lie.
Yes. We might be talking about this in a few years. Um, and then we have one pay estimate, um, to interstate concrete asphalt company. And that's for the paving of. So now they're shut down, so we won't have another one. I am going to skip to the end. Um, to talk about the stuff that's, I mean, everything's pretty well spelled out, so we don't get back and. That's just for that stuff. That's okay, cause it's all listed there, but, uh, the items at the end. So one of the things is the new building dedication that we talked about after the first of the year. So our plaque, uh, that we talked about should be as maybe later this week or first of next week. So we'll have that. Um, and I think the contractor has quite a bit of the cleanup punchless items that they'll be working on. So in the next two to three weeks, and so it'd be nice to, you know, get the door, some of the doors that don't close to close and the flooring. Not. Move to the floor properly, all those things fixed, it'd be nice, but, you know, not the time to get notification out to everybody else. The public and those that might want to attend. I don't know if that week of the twenty-second. Seems like, uh, a decent week, or do you wanna do it earlier? Or later?
I guess the question is, is when do we want to have another snowstorm? Because that's one.
Yeah, right about here.
Yeah, that's, that's when I'm looking at the next big snowstorm.
I mean, we could do it in first of March if you want.
Maybe we'll have all of our furniture by then?
Yeah, doubtful, but we'll have more of it. Yeah, we'll have more of it.
More of it.
Chance is the weather will.
Yeah, yeah.
And, yeah, and the other thing is, is, you know, by the first of March, we should be at the bottom of that next COVID. COVID, um, so I think that would make more sense. Okay. Commissioner Christopher, how do you feel?
I agree, just, I, I think this COVID phase will be done by then and, um, that way nobody can. Tell us we're risking lives or something by having a grand open, so smart, smart idea.
Sound good.
Yeah, so have like an open house where you guys do some kind of invitation. A formal and then, um, maybe food and drink or, uh, walk around or.
We're gonna smash a bottle of champagne against the building?
This isn't a ship, sir. Uh, also it'll be lighter later.
Yeah.
So if we actually do it after five o'clock.
Okay. Okay, so we want us to just work with Lee to come up with the date that, that works for you guys. Okay, thank you. Um, so I wanted to, uh, bring up, I handed out, um, a packet that was from the state auditor's management letter. And I apologize, Dan, that we didn't get this stuff scanned for you. Anyway, so, uh, we got a call, uh, before this was published, uh, that said that they were gonna make recommendations. A recommendation about the E R and R fund and, you know, not a lot of details, like, okay. So, um, then this came out and it's not true. So the remainder of your packet, each year we evaluate and are required by R C W. To do our rates, set new rates if they're warranted. So each year, twenty eighteen, we actually adjusted all the rates and there's a rate sheet with it. Um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we reviewed the rates and determined that there was no need for adjustments. Based on the revenue that was being generated. From the equipment. And those are all, we brought them all to the board, discussed them and. Each year, that's what we're required to do by R C W. And so we did what we were supposed to do. Uh, I talked to Brenda this morning and she was gonna call the state auditor. She didn't think they would be able to change this. Uh, but now I, I, it's my obligation to tell you what we have done and that we have met our requirement. And then now crab is pretty on the ball. Actually, they, they knew about this before I did. And, uh, so they are asking, so that I have to explain and justify to them what our actions were over this time period. But I just wanted to, to make you aware, um, that this is not correct. Because we did review.
Yes.
And we brought it to the board. And discuss.
So why are, why is the rental rate on our five yard dump trucks more than on my ten year, ten year?
Cause they don't get the use. So it's based on use. So if you use it, the equipment a lot, not like the ten yards, we use them all year long. Um, the equipment rate actually goes down. Uh, but if you use a vehicle less, like the five yarders, they're really used in. Snow removal in the winter time, we're in areas where we can't get in with a big dump truck here, so the rates are higher.
Is it just so that you, you figure how many hours you use it and then when you expect to replace it?
Yeah, and then, and so, yeah, the cost to maintain it throughout the year. So your fixed costs are probably very similar. Right, yes, yeah. So just wanted to make you aware.
I, yeah, when I first saw it in the audit, I was like, oh, that makes sense, cause they know we sign it every year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, auditor, you think you should do more, but we were warned by. Perform a complete analysis. Which is analysis that they're, like, they think.
Yeah, that's, that's not what the R C W says, they were all over the R C W.
Right, and they're auditors, they're not public work.
Yes, so if they had to talk to us about this specifically, we could have provided this information to them. But the, the, uh. Not in person, not it is, not quite as. You don't have as much communication. Um, so the next thing on this list is, uh, Lyle sidewalk. Jeff, he's been working on this one.
Okay, um, I was approached by, uh, the Lyle Community Council. Because back in, I don't know if you remember days, but back in twenty twelve, I floated a grant proposal to the state. That's been quite a few years ago, but anyway, they were, they were approached by, or approached Gina McCave about potential. That's legislature has a lot of extra funding, supposedly, but they're gonna use it for. But they said, could you blow up this project? And so looking at it, it's kind of a, it's, uh, it's not a grant, it's an appropriation. So, and if you read through it a little more, they asked for a match. Now, I don't have, we don't have the money matched, this public works does not have the money matched project with this bank. But the thought is maybe we still fill it out to see what, what the legislature says. Now, they may come back to you guys and say, hey. We'll give you, we'll give you ten million dollars for this first phase, but you guys need to pop up. I, hey, no, before I, before I go through all this, I need to know if you want to do that. Or just, you know, say, okay, we can take our chances, write it, show no match. They may come back and ask, they may come back and ask for something, but I'll explain the project a little bit. Just it's changed some, the cost has changed dramatically, of course. Um, so the first phase is it says phase one, it's all this in the green. So basically it's grouped out of sidewalk and there's a cross section here that tells you what it is. You have bike lanes. Um, high twelve foot highway lanes, bike lanes, uh, parallel parking and sidewalks. And I don't end up on both sides of the road, so it's major white. And it essentially turns Lyle into looking like. It would give it that look.
Is there a bike lane in it too?
There's no bike, this would add the bike lane, outside of the bike lane. And they may come back and say drop it. It's a, it's a big recreational use over there, so. Um, that's, that would be, that's the final concept. So basically what that does, and the difference between this one and the one in twenty twelve. Was one, the cost, and two, we're going down seven thousand. There's certain criteria you have to beat that legislature equitable. Climate change, so we add charging stations, you would add lighting, you would add a path to the tribal lands. Uh, sidewalk to the tribal ass, that's seven against you. So essentially what the base one project is, it sits, the stuff in the green is about ten million dollars.
Is that a new bridge? Cause can they put another path across to tribal?
Well, that part we still have to look into. No, it's not a new bridge.
Okay, cause it's not widening.
No.
No, you'd have to, uh, you'd have to add width to it.
Yes.
Yeah, they add the sidewalk something.
Yes, that includes the cost, then, you know, add, not a new bridge, but the light.
You're gonna put sidewalks on both sides there?
That one we probably only put once.
Okay.
Because of the cost of the bridge, that we would get, you know, one side. We probably put two sidewalks down to the intersecting. And then prepare that that last road.
Are we gonna be carrying beyond buildings? Cause that, it, it looks like you're.
No, it fits.
Does it?
Yeah, it does.
Did I see a line?
Yeah, the lines are kinda, uh, for drawing purposes and, but other, this map is from twenty twelve. The aerials from twenty twelve, that's not changed. So the question is, we could make this even a bigger project and address all this. By the phase two, phase three. Phase two slows traffic down and it's in red because it extends the sidewalk down. Where it's crossing or where on Highway eight where they cross to go across to the spit and around about. And then the last phase would actually make the crossing across the railroad tracks and get you access to the spin. You add, you add that and you probably add another five million dollars. So the whole package, if you wanted, one, two and three is right around fifteen, sixteen.
Okay, so is this on our six year road plan?
No.
So, so if we go forward trying to get this and they're gonna require a matchup, but what, what do you think the match would be?
You again, we could apply and just, I would apply no match and they would, they could come back to you guys and say, look. You might get a call from Gina or somebody and say, look, we're gonna fund this, but you guys need to kick in and then it becomes. Uh, maybe a negotiated thing where you say we can only afford this. I don't know, not, you know.
But they said, they said what they.
They said fifty percent.
Yeah.
That's not.
No.
Right.
Somebody else might be willing to do that, right? I just, I don't see, considering this is not on our six year road plan, I don't see.
Yeah, Gina thought that the, the best project for funding would be the original sidewalk.
And if we're requiring a new both sides of the road.
I don't know what, whether Wash Dot would allow us to do half of it or not.
Wash Dot would want the full. There, which is on both.
Yeah, so most of this is on there right away. Yeah. So I, I don't think, I mean, if we recommended, we're gonna recommend something, it'd be the original plant. And no match. If we, if we submit it, if we submit, yeah.
Well, I would be, I mean, as I was in twenty twelve, I am in favor of submitting. I mean, they're never gonna drive around and look for places to, oh, here's some money.
Right.
The, you know, the first thing you have to do is ask, do I think it has much of a chance? No, but it's possible.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I, I would be in favor of submitting phase one, I think. Phase two and phase three are so far out there, plus I'm not sure what the, uh, what's going on within the planning stages. On S R fourteen anyway, as far as the roundabouts, if this is, I don't know if this, that site is even. Even in their thinking about putting a roundabout, which I'm slowly converting my, uh. Reluctance to. But I would be in favor of going into asking the film match. They're gonna come back and want something. But it makes it a lot easier to have a discussion when we're actually talking about the ballers, not some hypothetical. And just submitting doesn't oblige you to, you know.
Right, but then it also doesn't look good if they come back and say, sure, we're willing to put up five million dollars to put up the other five. And we're stuck being bad guys, saying, I wish we could put up five million, but they're.
I know, but that's an easy conversation for me to have, at least with the communities, like where, where do we get five billion dollars for a match? You know, if it's a ten percent match, maybe we can have a discussion about it. Build it in somewhere, but, you know, fifty percent match is a lot.
Yeah.
So that's a lot of.
Commissioner Christopher, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I, I got a question. Um, state highways, why are we responsible for sidewalks on state highways anyway? Shouldn't that be washed out or am I wrong?
For us, it's a community enhancement thing more than it is a state highway project.
Yeah, I guess I, I would say that, um, I'm kinda with Dave, it doesn't hurt to ask for a hundred percent match. Um, I just. Worry like Commissioner Anderson that, you know, they're gonna come back with, oh, ten percent match. And then the community's gonna be up in arms because we don't have the ten percent match. And I'm not willing to, you know, mortgage our future on that ten percent match. So I, I don't mind asking, but I, I wanna make sure the community knows there's no guarantee here.
Cause even a million dollars outside of our six year road plan, throws our six year road plan into a tizzy. At a ten percent. Oh, I know, that's always, but it's a lot easier for me to find a million to get nine million than it is. Five to get five, that's, that's not a real good equation. Well, on the count, just talking to people there, I, I told them, you know, when I saw that this potential match. I said, look, I think this might be dead on delivery, we don't have that kind of line. And they understand. Now, we didn't get into the aspects of it, they asked. And they understand. Now, we didn't get into the aspects of it, they asked, ten percent or fifty percent. And they know. The guy's dry.
Maybe, maybe the traffic. Never hurts to ask.
Never hurts to ask.
I said, go ahead, ask.
Phase one.
Phase one.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't see phase three.
Yeah, phase three is right.
How many years?
I don't know how you can apply for something that's not even yours.
Right, it is.
Well, phase three, the phase two have another problem that I would recommend it, but if we look at, take it, if you see where the river is, that's also the exempt area, hence the exempt area towards. So while, yeah, we could apply for it, we could get the money, but we probably wouldn't build it anyways. Cause we all know how long that takes.
But the bridge over the river part.
Well, past that, you did it.
Oh, so that's a whole different process.
But I mean, would you have to rebuild the bridge? Cause you don't have more room for that.
No, there's sidewalks.
But it doesn't have the.
No bike lanes, we wouldn't do the bike lanes.
Okay.
Now, we would just make the.
No bikes, whatever.
We make the connector.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, just so though, even if it's a ten percent patch, come out with ten percent, it is easier than coming up with ten percent fifteen.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you. Uh, next on the list, so quite a while ago, back in twenty twelve, uh, actually before that, ninety one, um, there were studies looking at access to the port in Vincent. And, uh, twenty twelve, that was revived. And, uh, we put together an estimate for access to the port. And, uh, and it was a funding cycle, uh, connecting Washington. That the legislature was looking at funding for in, uh, twenty fifteen. And the county, well, the county and the cities, um, requested dollars for this project to connect either overpass or an underpass, some, some way to connect to the port. That was uninterrupted and provided, uh, safe access. That couldn't be interrupted by the trains, that's sometimes stopped. So, um, as I started, yeah, we've been given numerous years. Moving in advertising. And, uh, and I'm not. Twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty, now it's twenty twenty four. So it just, the deadline keeps, I'm sorry. The deadline just keeps getting, uh, prompt. Just keeps getting pushed out. And I'm not sure it's a real priority for the state. That seems to be.
They bought the property, right?
Yeah, we acquired the property, but we just can't get the construction. And when I was meeting with them, at it going like the railroad is the longest lead item. They're, oh, no, we've done this before. Well, no problem, we'll get it in a year. Well, that was at least six or seven years ago. Yeah, it was right from the get go. And, uh, and we're still fighting the same issues and not moving forward. And so I'm wondering if that maybe, cause I say things and it doesn't matter, it doesn't go anywhere, that if, uh, someone from our legislative body talks to maybe the regional administrator for this region, uh, they can know that it's important to us to actually finish this project. Cause I don't, I don't think there's really a fire to get it done.
Certainly not, and I, I don't know if they're planning on. Being for one thing, I don't even know, cause this was originally done, they appropriated the twenty two point eight million. Well, we all know what's happened to construction costs.
Yes.
So then to now, it's like, now they're like, well, we don't have that money. So we can't do it, we just bought this right away.
Yeah, and this.
We'll do it in the future.
Yeah, if we need to, this is probably the cycle to be asking for additional funding if we need it, if it's underfunded. I don't know if they've done that yet again, but I know that they already have talked about it not being having enough funds, but it's a lot, it's a, basically a decade from when you got the money. And we all know what's happened in a decade to construction costs. So I, I don't know, it just, I.
Well, I think it's time. Uh, I think I actually do, I'll, I, that, that's the one to talk to. He got us the money originally, he's, you know, he's the ranking member on, on transportation. He can apply some pressure, but it's, I don't understand there, it just, it's like, well, they, from the very beginning, they just did not want to get this project.
Yeah, right, cause we, we got the money.
Right.
Yeah, they didn't, it wasn't their project.
Wasn't their project, and then, then it was that, well, no, we do what we're told. They tell us to build it. Apparently not.
Yeah.
We'll build it eventually. I wonder, I wonder how much that twenty two million has been spent? That would be another question on the accounting side.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I'm sure there's project, you know, things have been charged against this project.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I know all the early design work, cause we were on good, I mean, I understand that's the process, but they were, you know, we were, it was like, I have twenty two million dollars and they were looking at options that were cost thirty and forty. It's like, why are we even looking at those? We have these options, cost that or less, cause I think originally when they came up with the final design, that it actually, they had, it was cheaper than they had more, they had money left over. Which is completely unacceptable. So.
You only had money left over until you go off.
Yeah, exactly, well, now I'm sure there's not.
Yeah.
Depending on what is left. But they haven't. True, but. Okay, yeah, I can, I will talk to Senator King if that's, if that's what the board is okay with. I'm good with that. Commissioner Christopher, are you good with that?
Yeah.
All right, last thing on our list is, uh, our new maintenance tech that we hired, uh, January third. Went back to, uh, Wash Dot and we, we planned to have a discussion with HR. Plan to just refill or fill the position with somebody else that was on that original list.
Yes.
So.
Commissioner Christopher?
Yeah.
Good.
I think so.
We're out of, almost out of time.
We're out of time. Uh, but that's, that completes our critical items to talk about.
One that I got, I got another one of the emails. And this one, uh, was asking about the the reimbursement for the damage to the, for the solar stuff. And, uh, oh, the one, so the citizens, citizens had to pay one point nine million. That is almost correct. When we, we spent the money to rebuild Roosevelt grade and we just put another six hundred thousand dollars onto it. The county portion of that, was that one point nine million?
I don't think we, so the, we got federal, we use federal SDP dollars, so there's an allocation that we received. And, uh, so that was two point three, I'm gonna, I'm not. I'm gonna get, yeah, but all of our these numbers, two point three.
Yeah.
Six million is federal dollars, then we have one million, one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Is landfill fees that we've been collecting for the last decade and a half, almost, that we're going to go to that purpose. So there may be some dollars that we have that we pay for our inspector and our testing. I don't know if all the, all the combination of those two will pay for everything, but it'll be really close.
In terms of actual county dollars from county taxes, it's gonna be de minimis.
Very small.
Very, yeah.
Very, very small. And I can give you the exact number, but I, I don't have that today.
And then have we billed, uh, the contractor for road repair on the, the other roads? Or on town?
No, so what we have them do is, uh, so they, Roosevelt's our project, Roosevelt grades our project. So we, we inspect the road, all, all their whole hall route before construction starts, and then we'll inspect it afterward. And then during construction, our agreement says, I mean, we have some middle roads really gonna be the critical one, cause it's gravel. So they had to make improvements to middle road before they started construction. So when we have them evaluated, we make them put in the life, build, build in the life they're gonna take away from the road before they ever start. That's the first thing. And then the second thing is, you know, it's, middle road is a local road, we grade it a few times a year. You know, it's not high on the priority list for plow and snow, so without, we continue to do typical maintenance. Anything beyond that, you know, they're, they're pounding the road. And so if it needs grading or watering or any of those things, they do it. We only do our normal maintenance, they get to do all the rest. And they do that at an ongoing basis. Then after they're done, we all look at the roads again, that route, and determine if they've damaged it by their operations, and then they have to repair that too. That's the process.
And, and it's on their cost of doing it, they're not paying us if we're, we're paying.
No, they pay, they pay for the repairs and they even pay for our inspector to be out there to make sure the work is being accomplished the way it's supposed to.
So there is no additional cost to move.
There hasn't been for any of the, the energy projects over the last decade.
Yeah, I can't say that the first couple.
Right, yeah.
Before the less that got learned. We did learn.
Yeah.
And I see that that person was online to ask that, so I hope that answers the question. Wanted to make sure that was the only. The only one I have there, and it is ten thirty, so unless.
We have one more, oh, we're real quick, sorry.
I know.
Uh, we also, we have a temporary that we had in Fickle. We'd like to convert that to a permanent, we wanted to see how the person did, we do, then we went high, we put it up in. We had a permanent position there. The person retired, we filled it with another one, we like to see how they made it through at least one of those snowballs. Person's been excellent, we would like to, or like to put it out in-house for the person.
Though, and it is in your jar?
Yes, it's not adding out.
Try and test it before we go.
Yes.
I'm done. Commissioner Christopher?
I was hoping I could get an update on the jail roof leak.
Well, let's go one second, let's, is everybody in favor of temporary to permanent? Commissioner Christopher?
What's that?
The temporary, okay.
Thank you. The jail roof leak, uh, we're trying to get Brown to come over and evaluate it. But we can't even get them to respond. We're, you know, we've been, we've reached out to him a couple times, we're gonna continue the work again. They're really our best option, yeah, cause they're close. If we can't get them, we'll reach out to somebody for them, that gets expensive.
We don't have any other roofers on our smaller.
Not that this.
Is this the, the same leak in the same spot as before, or is this a new leak in a new spot?
We're not sure is the problem, because with the roof, it could leak in one spot. Leak could be way over here, but it could actually be infiltrating over here. So it's going, it's going into where the old chiller used to sit it, but that's an old. So maybe migrating. Yeah, it could be migrating somewhere else is the problem. Like I said before, the roof maybe has four years left. And maybe less.
We'll look at that too.
We'll look, we'll have them evaluate that too, but we're gonna, we're gonna try to run down, that's the number one.
Right.
Some of the buckets for.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Price is price.
Uh, were you sitting here when they were talking? There's an error on it, but that's fine. For elections, that's where my hair is. We have February election, ballot from there last week, we opened the ballot box in the, the cap box. We do have, uh, Crosser School District also is, they're all holding, uh, they're proposing. Propositions, all four school districts. But Crosser, we didn't, we chose not to open it, because it's like almost thirty five miles in the metro. You're the nearest voter, and if they want to go to a ballot box in Benton County, it's like maybe seven miles. So it's like, use the mail. I mean, it's not, I, yeah, I just didn't feel it. But just so you know, in case you get any fights from east end of the county. Again, I should have Crosser in there as well. Uh, so, you know, that's good, and I had forgotten to ask public works to, but the ballot box is out, which I found out once, you know, a couple of the two. And so I sent Gordy a text and they graciously just said, oh, no problem, you're on it.
They're so proud of you.
I'm sure they did, I mean, there was a courtroom I could walk over, you know, but voters shouldn't have to do that. And that was bad on me, so, yeah, okay. We all talked about it, we knew about it, we just didn't, and it's not. It's fixed now. The audit's completed, I did get a call from Gordy this morning, I had a call, so the, I received an email while I was sitting in the back from her supervisor saying she's out on maternity leave, please give him a call and, you know, and a call. And he, uh, you know, dispense our concerns. So that's what I plan on doing. Uh, did send links out to the annual report to the board, so you should have received that. Um, steering committee, our, uh, for the finance consultant was attending March first, I've had one inquiry, which was positive because they were just clarifying the date. Uh, but at least somebody's looking. That's a good thing. Yeah, so.
And was that for you reaching out to them?
No, it's for Gordy reaching out, publishing it in the Seattle Daily Journal, and whatever his office does. There's places, it was not anything that, yeah. It was, it was private firm that reached out saying where they saw you at, and. So it's a good thing, it's a good story. Um, one quarter my shared licensing fees, I mean, uh, every quarter to get a hundred thousand nine hundred forty three dollars and fifty six cents. Uh, the legislature, the nineteen forty session, uh, legislature session, uh, passed the bill. He was, he's seventeen eighty nine, where a portion of the, uh, allowing these fifty cents, those, I think it's right, state one, I think it's King County. That's graciously donated, their, their state. It, the wording is, uh, the, this day to the total by the deal over. So, you know, like last night, I saw the spreadsheet before this was even drafted, it was in King County.
That, and that's our general fund.
It goes in, and it gets split through all three counties. Yeah.
And it goes into our general fund?
No, it goes, yeah, it gets deposited in my rep, for your rep.
Your rep.
Yeah, for the Department of Licensing, but yeah.
So it's, thank you, it covers the licensing personnel, isn't it?
I would hope that the money that we bring in normally covers that, cause it's well over a hundred thousand without that.
Without that.
Yeah. So. So we don't really have anything in recording, um, just busy, busy. And logic cats, yesterday we had a meeting, I'm sure they referred. And logic cats, yesterday we had a meeting, I'm sure they referred this as a big, you know, detail of skinny on it. So I'm not going to take away from this under, but we did have eleven applications reviewed. We're recommending all of them. Might be a little over budget, but there's, uh, plenty of money, plenty, plenty of, uh, dedicated revenues set aside, be budgeted. Right, it's just a couple of thousand. So there's lots of market paths that we didn't anticipate. So, and that's all. Those are all restricted funds and so.
I think so because we were trying to have an allowance, uh, so that where it's not growing so. Out of eleven applications this month, we've got half, right?
Yeah, the chambers, um, chambers that each have. They'll, they'll hold me to that. But, and then we had the county, of course, had a number of further amenities. Some that were all to a four and a half.
Okay, well, it's good. Well, that's what we were looking for every source of revenue.
So, um, yeah, I don't want to take away from this.
How many are you getting?
Oh, elections is just phenomenal. Yeah, I think that we got all of it. One or two of those.
How many open ones did you have?
At one time, about five. And, uh, and then we're at several ones. And, um, then we have one now for forty. So that's. I don't think that was going to be. No, again, it's asked us to, there's. I'll work on it here, then I get a call, a call, and then I get called to the D O L counter. I get called to finance or whatever. I, you know, oh, we need, we need this, we need that.
Honestly, it's sort of, that's.
I mean, honestly, I know we want that. And Jen has asked me for that. She's, can't you even give me an average? I'm like, mm, no.
I, I understand.
So.
It's nice to know it's good for, at some point, we're going to have to go for something.
I will try to go back to some of my pad, put some hours on, but honestly, it's going to be.
And even if it's an estimate of that ten percent, that's still better.
Yeah, so she, she told me she's just grabbing up her, because I laughed. Any questions? That's all I have.
Mr. Christopher, any questions?
Uh, I don't because our mics, they're horrible and I only got about one out of every four words of all that. Uh, public works wasn't bad, but, oh, that was way better. See, it's that mask thing, that evil mask thing. Uh, so no, I will leave it up to you guys since I didn't really get to hear that. But even, I couldn't even hear Jake, um, talking on all that right there. So. We'll get mics eventually and things will be better, but, uh, carry on, gentlemen.
No, that doesn't help. It makes it worse. No, you're, you're almost impossible.
Yeah, like I try to go back.
Oh, yeah.
Just, just her not having her mask on, I can understand now. It's, it's amazing.
So was there a topic that covered that you had questions on that I could elaborate on since you couldn't hear me with the mask on?
I will end up looking at the minutes and if I have a question, I'll give you a call.
Okay, I sent you the attachment.
Oh, okay. I'll look at that too then.
Before the meeting.
I didn't see it. I'll go look again.
Right, I sent it about ten o'clock. So, okay, all right. Let me know if you have questions.
I did not get Brenda's packet in my email, so if staff has that eventually at some point.
Just emailed it about ten.
Okay.
So I had the litter crew supervisor kind of together, what's been picked up since, I believe, September. So I just acquired like twenty-five thousand illegal dumps. Uh, just got two of those. Just a three was about six hundred pounds of the waste. Those are basically just kind of destinants, of course, one district's a little bit heavier than the other because, you know, one of our districts are.
So, so these are the legal dumps or they all just right alongside the road and people are just like choosing to not go to the base station? Are they on roads?
Where flies off the back of trucks. One was a dead horse under a bunch of drywall.
Well, that'd get blowouts.
Yeah, so, uh, miles claimed, uh, about fifty-eight miles so far. We're, we're, we're still doing something, but kind of like I'm on the way. But the, uh, spring weather in the corner should be able to sort of.
Can you give me a sense of the scale of what is typical? I mean, that seems fifty-eight miles is not a bad number. Apparently it's less than what would typically be done.
Yeah, you should be able to do five to six miles each day, really. Because it's road miles, so if they're on both sides of the road, then two and a half miles or just five miles. So really, that's, that's a decent day. Uh, she's only been having one person on crew most times. And so with one person, you only get one side of the road and then the other, so you get completely less.
We're having a long person.
We're going to get to that.
Two months.
Yeah, we're going to get to that. In fact, while we just segue into that. So, uh, I guess I had an email here a week or two ago to the judges and adult probation. We have two miles, you know, usually two, three, I guess they have four coming in. But adults have been really difficult to get. We've got, we've had two adults who are, which I won't allow to come back and tell all things official negative tests. And then the other one in the hospital last night. So, you know, with only two adults to go out there to get litter out of the game at the moment, it's just very difficult to, uh, to have an adult recruit because we have two days that were, uh, you know, but aside for that, it's, it has a big impact on my, on my safety. So, one of the things that I've had to working on are education outreach materials and, um, you know, other things like that. But I'm already being poured out of my illustrated piece and maybe we can actually do she could take them out to the cemetery or, you know, soup kitchen or, you know, something like that. And maybe add evenings with kids, you know, so, uh, so we're trying to figure out how we might be able to make this work before it does. So, uh, I hope I can catch up with Steve Pro today to talk about adults. So, so we're trying to work it out, trying to figure out. But the spring coming, it's a lot, a lot of stuff. So hopefully we change gears and, you know, try to realize in that position.
Are the, are the judges not giving any assurance?
I have no idea. I'll do that better when I get to see.
Yeah, we wonder if they're not, if they're not assigning, I mean, are they assigning it? Does everybody get a pass?
Our litter crew is a little specific. Steve Pro has a position. He would actually do other things like shovel snow or, um, you know, pick this up, care to pick up, or do apply, whatever. If there were other things that they could do, um, you know, for them. Litter, yeah, litter crew, but for the good of years, to do the small runs and push snow on the ground. So, um, so we're, we're trying to integrate other aspects. I'm sort of about asking too much, because I can't cover, I can't cover other things.
With the litter. It's only for litter.
Yeah, it's the litter and quota, but it's probably. So yes, we're, we're definitely doing something. And I should have more information. Of course, a few loads coming up, so that's a biggie. Uh, we do do data questions prior to that event. So it's a bunch of sitting around and counting, but, you know, it's really important. So I'm pedal before the bat. I know, looking forward to it. That's, that's like my, I don't know, it's, it's my thing. Both have these things, that's my thing. Recycled program, um, because I brought the show with me. So we have the recollect Waste Wizard, which is the disposal tool on our website. I don't know if it's on there. I expect you to, and I'm able to look at those statistics, so I will make sure to check tomorrow and see that it's been used. Um, we have a game option on there too, which is fun. It's just a knowledge game. Um, you have to select where different things. And you'd be wrong. And why am I wrong? I didn't realize I couldn't put a cement brick in my curbside garbage. So it's a, it's a fun learning tool. Definitely check that out. Called Dumpster Diving in Quiktech County. Um, we also now have two phone apps available.
Put concrete blocks in. It's actually a relevant question. Do I have it yet? I want to know.
If you go to the transfer station, yeah. If it's too large, they'll ask you to cut it down. But yeah, finding other resources for it would be good to clearing it out in your yard if you have just a yard. But just not in the curbside garbage because it's too heavy. It doesn't compact for the garbage trucks. Um, two phone apps, you put it right on your phone and you can search for the different items as they come up and the Christmas tree event. We were going to do a Christmas tree event in West Salmon and Goldendale. Those got canceled because of the snowstorm and the lack of garbage service. We didn't have the option. Fingers to go out there. The schools have been closed. So the school seemed really on board and excited for it, so we put it back on the calendar for next year and promote it later next year. Probably we can get those organic set into dirt hugger instead of just the transfer station. Um, we began talking to the Goldendale Chamber and the Golden Dale City Council to try to get a community cleanup in Goldendale this year. With it being the year of, have they been years or something? Yeah, so we're going to go with the, you know, beautify Goldendale this year. Um, so we're working with them to figure out what funds and who's going to run it. White Salmon and Binge do one every year after a very long time. It's a very successful program and we would like to see that in Goldendale. Since Goldendale has the transfer station so close, it's not going to be the same. We will limit it. Some things you can just take to transfer stations and be easier just to take it there. So it's going to be specific items, but yard waste being one of them. What else did we decide? Yeah, I don't know. There, there are going to be some garbage, but both the items, client does have to just place it still go to the transfer station since we're limited. Water dam is a program we do every year with the schools. It's been canceled the last two years. This is the third year now canceled again with COVID issues, but we are actually working together to try to do a take home package for the kids. So they can still take home the packet, learn about sustainable behavior. That one's based solely around water and land. So doing with the fish, doing with litter, usual that ends up affecting more animals. And we work with the Forest Service and a couple other activities and the dam, they all are involved. Um, White Salmon and Binge Community Cleanup is going to be held again this year, the second and twenty-third. And we did get approved for another grant, the red grant. Brought that up. So, yeah, so that funding is being worked right now. We should see that probably the next update. Depending on how quickly they move forward with it. What I thought for my programs. And then yesterday we did meet with, uh, White Sabbath. A little auction pass course, um, of two or three. I don't know how many, but, uh, they are trying to start with some baseline data for trash and recycling, things like that. I'm not quite sure what metrics we get, so we'll kind of look at that, but, um, it kind of goes hand in hand with the production that they passed last year. And then some of the regulations that they passed. So this is just part of the process to.
So are you going to let them do your recycling and as they go through to figure out how many counts?
We figure if we, if we work on this with them, then it'll help us a little bit down the road when we. I think it's going to be a little difficult. Um, the public services doesn't have a good way of giving the metrics for what white salmon themselves are producing in waste and what's coming out of that city. So because of the way that the rural system, everything's kind of combined. There's no good way to know for sure how much is coming specifically from them. So we may need to do a couple audits just to kind of get a feel for where overall number is averaging out in comparison to what a smaller pot it looks like to see if those numbers are. So we'll see. We do a reciprocal audit anyway, so. Budgets, uh, there is a hearing today for, uh, Friday, five seventy-three, which is the LACCA Fund, the second offer of our products. We are looking at the means of funding, proposing other options for future funding. For being the same boat that we're in.
Let everybody know what LACCA stands for.
LACCA is Models Toxic, um,
What's the C?
A, yeah.
They're devoting. It's always a target.
So. So we're working on other means of being able to. These other ones, I don't really have a whole lot of information on them. We get, we're still, we're still talking about it. We're still waiting to see how it goes. The plastic details shopping days. I'm pretty sure that when they're all passed, it's basically done. I'll reconsider later. It's how they're going to pass, so. That's really big right now, so we're not going to hear the last bit. More of a less conversation with the legislation, the legislators. And then Republic Services. As we all know, we've been having a lot of issues with services. Michelle came over with a really good idea to utilize that, which is positive and that's to actually uh, use it for waste reduction message, um, for those that have not had that pick up for a month. To be able to see how much is actually accumulated, gives a natural representation of how much waste they generate. So we're going to utilize that in a positive way, even though they're having maybe about with Republic Services yesterday and operations maybe. The, the hauling company for spin down employees and
The, the hauling company, we're spending down employees and, um, so the qualified, qualified drivers, so sales. Those jobs, a little lot of private, it's. Different set of skills, so it is kind of difficult, then you've got COVID, and you've got snow, and a new mess, so again. Um, and then more employees, and you have the capital, so it really has to have a perfect storm, and, uh. So yesterday in our meeting, uh. We discussed having people come down, uh, to the whole company, because we can't keep that help, the, the packages and stuff like that, so. That'll be a bill, and Stephen right now is looking for drivers or boys that can send over for, for a short, long time. I'll be getting a, I'll not see, or we'll see what that holds.
Are they doing, are they putting it over time?
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, they always have before, even. Yeah. So.
Make sure, you know, our PED employees, our county employees, everybody's, but, you know, the time, they were shut down for two weeks.
Well, and even more than that, and then they were completing their message, so I've gotten a lot of feedback from the community, um, they're very unhappy. And we get it, we completely apologize, because, you know, here we are, working in our bill too, but, you know, we're. We're not making it up, so.
And then they said, you can take it to the transfer station, and the transfer station is closed.
It closes down because we fill so many cans, and we may have no drivers to take this chance. The transportation or something, it took a nap off there, it was, it was, they, so nothing they could do. So, fill that, okay, so, yeah, it's very frustrating, it's a little bit.
But, but the fact that you can't go online and see that they're closed, you do all your part, filling up all your cans, you drive all the way out there. And they're closed, and it's like, why isn't there on their website something that says, we're, we're likely gonna close, you know, in two hours due to being full?
There is, there's an operational phone line.
So you have to call every time?
Have to call it, yeah, before you head out, you call it, it'll tell you whether the station is.
And there's actually on our webpage, um, it's on Westwood, Solid Westwood, there's a, uh. There's a number listed in there because he called under the store services. So I had a call from a lady, just starting with the same argument, I think she, well, that we're engaged, that, well, that means I have to drive all the way up there to get it. So look at our webpage, we do have the number listed on there. Um, we do try to get stuff on our social media, um, when we get the, when we get information. Uh, right now, there is a change in leadership for the transfer stations. Um, Zach Foster, I think he probably wants, but he has taken over his job. And, um, he's still on board, and so as soon as he's got his speed better and, and feels comfortable about, you know, sitting down, having a meeting, and having a little bit of play, because that's what we do. Um, and we'll, and when we get, we'll kind of see what levels of the transport stations and how we're gonna be able to hold that gap.
Doesn't it seem like their root problem is just staffing? You know, that's been for a while.
And.
I mean, this, this, I mean, mechanical, I think there's, yeah, there's that too. She said it's the perfect, yeah, that's adding to it. You don't have to have to fix it, and then, so you're already, like, even during good weather, you know, in the summer. They're like on the edge of the, you know, and then.
One person to get out on medical.
And then, everything goes down in the, in the winter with the, with the snowstorm. It's, there's just no way, because how do you recover?
Right.
They don't have any capacity, they don't have any built-in, um, extra capacity to go, it's like, well, if you didn't pick up garbage for two weeks. How are you going, you could barely, uh.
Yeah.
How are you gonna gain two weeks back? You have to bring outside resources in.
Yeah, and there, there's.
Unsympathetic, because they, you know, we have, you know, we have positions we can't fill, especially in those critical positions as far as truck drivers and stuff, so.
Yeah.
We'll see if that number, legal dumbst goes up.
Yeah, we'll see.
No more dead horses.
Yeah, so I did, uh, I sent you, kind of my update, the, uh, response that I requested. So, uh, she stated that we understand the customer complaint that have come with, uh, with challenges for the last few weeks. We have two drivers starting tomorrow, but they continue to work our recovery connect for all customer service. Please keep in mind that as there has been weather for multiple weeks, there has been that much work to be picked up. Um, we continue to communicate on areas we have delayed service, um, or can delay to wait to pick out a service office. So, um, so there is communication, um, there is a direction forward, I haven't seen.
How do, if I may, how do they communicate? I'm not a, I, I just don't work.
I need a call.
No, but how are, because I think a lot of the frustration at a lot of times is there is no.
Yeah, so.
It's like, you know, people are like, oh, I just left my can down in the snowbank for three weeks.
Dog got it.
And the dog got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, playing with me, is it just robo calls?
It's been robo calls, um, and then one of them.
We know we were supposed to be here last, but it's gonna be Thursday this week.
It's usually not gonna be, it's gonna be here on Tuesday, but then we changed that, because we weren't able to.
Bring somebody.
Thursday, and that, yeah, and that created a, a shitstorm. So we won't be doing that, I hope. Uh, so we're working on it, and, uh, we have gotten some good feedback from some of the residents on how we might get the board forward, because, you know. People are still kind of stung from a few years ago, uh, on that, some again, issue that we had, and all the pattern that happened back then. So, um, you know, people are frustrated and kind of sour, uh, with the public services, so. Um, we definitely will kind of change that around, and the public services definitely must have changed that around, so, uh. One of our residents suggested doing an actual public survey, um, to kind of help guide, you know, what those services are. I provided that to the public services in the past, and, uh, you know, what I get from complaints, and so we log all of the complaints, or, you know, why we, or, you know. So we try to keep a log of all of those, and last year, we've been reporting those on diligent for Republic Services. Um, because that was part of the, part of the future plan, we'll, you know, increase that, I would, plus I think that right then. Uh, I think that's a really good idea, uh. We'll see where that goes, because I think it will still even actually talk, just specifically. Maybe if you get some, because nobody, nobody wants to talk, nobody wants to have that, nobody wants to have that. Okay, and then last but not least, I'm still waiting on the time report, uh, so I can send you those, we'll send you the stuff when I actually get it. The, uh. The amounts that we got for quarter three, or, um, certainly, certainly five, yeah. Uh, for quarter four, we went back down to, 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 so overall, we're, so one hour, I don't know, it's close to about ten more.
Oh, good.
I know.
Now we need eleven.
And I did, yeah, and I did get two point five, I think that two point five, probably was the highest that we've ever, ever had. So.
It's gonna be complex, so it's not like, oh, you're contract, it's just. It's just one handed.
There's some, yeah, there's some, there's some stuff working, uh, but just, we're at two. For a minimum of two years, so. Um, first, that's a long process.
Where does Stanley Cooper go?
Uh, I think, orbit of this.
Oh, no.
And then the other one is the, um. Cash, great cash.
That's the, that's the room. Show there is there.
I think that's their main hauler.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Christopher, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
He looks like he's still in bed.
He could be, you don't really know. He's sitting in the chair, I can see a chair.
Sitting in the lazy boy.
Thank you for sharing.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Oh, God, you definitely dug into Halo, he's trying to more light on that. All right, thank you. Mr. Christopher, do you have anything you should discuss?
Nothing pressing.
Okay, I feel, I feel you, or I felt what you're feeling, so I understand. That hurts. Um, I have a question. Um, I got an email from someone from the city, uh, White Salmon about the pool. They wanna have a meeting, a discussion, now that they have final design. I saw a picture of it, a rendering of it on Facebook, uh, at the same time. Did, did a previous board promise them?
No.
Um, I can be really clear about that, but has, has a pre, have we previously given money to the city?
Because actually, before my time, there was, and we've produced it a couple times, because there's no institutional knowledge, or people choose to forget. That there was dollars given, both to Goldendale and White Salmon towards their pools. White Salmon chose to take their money, reallocate it to their water system, they got permission from the county. But we, we gave them the money for something else, and they have to be reminded of that, about it.
The dinosaurs.
Right, moved on, and so, yeah, because the, you know, new folks come along, you're like, well, hey, the county helped me with the pool in Goldendale. Now it's our turn, and it's like, no, you've got your turn the same time. Goldendale actually built a pool with that money, and White Salmon built something else, so. To put it towards their water system, because I'm sure if they wanna meet, they're gonna.
Oh, no.
But didn't the county, a couple years ago, give the White Salmon Pool fifty thousand from economic development?
We did, actually, that was the pool committee, let's see, what did we do? They did a rework of the building that they had. They did, they did something.
No, it had to do with, we front-loaded, because they passed their, I mean, they created the park district. But they, and the voters approved it, but they weren't gonna get any revenue for all, for a year, for over a year, and so they had. To be able to move the planning effort, they would have just stopped for a year. We did give them, I think you're right, I think it was fifty thousand dollars, and did they give any back, was it, was it? No, it was not a loan, it was just a grant. So we have made that contribution recently, that was to cool, good memory, Mr. Christopher. I just couldn't remember exactly why the previous board did that until you said that immediately, so.
I guess my big thing from what I saw is this pool is. How many actual months of swimming do you have in a covered pool of the city? It's gonna be built.
Not what it was before, yeah.
I just, I just. Have a hard time. There. Okay, that was, that was my question, I needed that, that knowledge before I sat down for the meeting.
I don't know if you wanna tape that, he probably has it somewhere, that original back.
Well, right now, for the conversation I mentioned, right?
Because I wanna say it was, it was five hundred thousand dollars. That's what my memory is, that they, they gave it to you. And five hundred thousand. For parts of reckless, because they can ask the city for the, but. Good luck with that.
Okay, um, do you have anything?
Uh, not that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a big motion that we recess for lunch, and.
I'd second the motion.
Uh, there's a motion in a second to recess, all those in favor, second to saying hi.
Hi. Hi.
Motion, Carrie, see you all at one o'clock. All right. One o'clock, and I will call the record this meeting to order. Let the record show that Commissioners Soder and Anderson are present in chambers, and Commissioner Christopher is being assumed. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance. A diligence to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, through God, indivisible, in the routine justice for all. Hey, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion in a second on the business agenda, all those in favor, second to saying hi.
Hi. Hi.
All right, motion, Carrie.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I would ask my seatmates if we could defer on the January eleventh meeting minutes, still working on some. But I would make a motion to approve the two amendments to the December seventh, twenty twenty-one, uh, minutes on page two, reflecting the addition of the wording two. Add-ons of the business, not page five, reflecting the addition of resolution number one two four two one dash one. The resolution was listed without the number prior to the correction. The motion would be approved of this. I would second the motion.
Yes, I'm trying to amend the December seventh, twenty twenty-one minutes. Second to saying hi.
Hi. Hi.
Hi, motion carries, we're going to move into citizen comment, comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. This will go until, uh, one twenty-five, which will then give the commissioners time to respond to any comments. So if you have questions, please do not expect an answer right then. We will start in chambers, um, as is our new tradition. I'm setting up the timer, if anybody would like to give public comment in chambers. Anyone? Carrie, please come forward.
I would like to loan a speaker to the county. There's a microphone in here, should be plug and play. You can use the microphone to talk into, so the people on Zoom can hear the public meeting, because at this time. When people participate in the open public meeting by Zoom, we are not able to hear you. So it does not make it feel like we are participating, also, I'd like to know why you removed closed capturing from, quote, closed capturing, from your Zoom. Meeting videos, when according to the ADA title two, you have to assist people who have. Hard of hearing or are deaf, and you don't provide any hearing assistance or any, you know, letting doing sign language, and you remove closed capturing. So I'd like to know that from the commissioners, and if there's no reason, I, I am requesting today that you put closed capturing back onto your Zoom meetings. And I would like you to use a speaker to, until you can get somebody in here to fix your sound system. Which is quite disappointing as a citizen, that you've spent so much money, of our money, and we can't hear you. And then also regarding the, uh, public records request, I keep hearing how your county's overwhelmed with our, with public records requests. And then we're being shamed for asking for public records, well, we shouldn't have to constantly ask our county for things. You should be more transparent, we shouldn't have the forty-two point five six, everything we wanna know. So in the meantime, I would like to know, would you guys use a speaker box, so the people who are watching on Zoom can listen and hear what you're saying? Because only one person should be speaking at a time, so there's one mic, you can give it to each other. Are you willing to use a speaker box in order for the meeting to be heard? This is how you treat citizens?
As we said, ma'am, we will respond if the commissioner chooses at one twenty-five. So I, as I stated, you cannot expect a response, this is not a back and forth.
Well, you've been notified from the beginning of this building that you are not able to hear you on the public records. You are not providing a public record, a public meeting that we can access. So I would like you to, if everybody listening on Zoom, they are, your county is being given an option to fix the sound system for eighty-nine dollars. After the eight thousand that didn't fix it, and we don't even know how much more. We don't even know how much more. I know, my time's going to be up, but I'm tired of our county wasting our money and not doing what's right by the citizens. Start doing what's, what we want you to do. We want to hear you on Zoom. Thank you.
Bern Harpool, it looks like, I'm guessing, online.
Hi, good afternoon, I know you have a clock, so I'm going to go really fast. I am here representing the committee of the Lyle Community Council that is working around the safe legal access to the Cookett River sandbar. Now, I have three points. Number one, I want to thank Lee Snell so much for finally giving us a copy of the endorsed proclamation that we've been asking for, for six months. Lee was great and helped us almost immediately with just a phone call. Number two, I'd like to give information to our committee member, Commissioner Soder. I've been stalled by the Amerititle folks in White Salmon for six weeks. They finally got back, or I finally got them cornered. And they said they had no record of even the Forest Service buying the, the property. I've been shined on by them, and I'm really disappointed, so we're going to need access to your records and do it the old-fashioned way. So Dave, just to let you know that Ameritile didn't come through. And then number three, I would like, if somebody could tell me who we can ask from the county to talk to BNSF about when they're going to replace the nineteen oh eight falling apart bridge across Cookett River, that will be critical to our access. And then finally, number four, hopefully sometime in the future, I get on the agenda so we can have a more complete discussion of what, where we're at with the Forest Service and the Highway Department and all the other folks. So I'll hopefully await some discussion, thank you.
You did that in a minute and thirty, Bern, next time you don't have to talk so fast.
I was told to talk slow last time, and I talked too slow.
Well, you'll, you'll get her down here soon, thank you, Bern, for your comment. All right, going back in the audience, is there anybody else who would like to give public comment? Please come forward. And state your names and.
Steve Glass, G L A S S. As a hard of hearing person, this kind of hits home a little bit. And I understand if you can or cannot, because of regulations or whatever, I have no idea. But I got a real simple request. Everybody is maintaining the six feet. So that's in compliance and everything. When you speak, could you lower your mask? I have hearing aids on, and I cannot understand people speaking through masks. So really be helpful, at minimum, you could just lower your mask to open your mouth up. So I can understand, and I'm sure anybody else with hearing aids has got the same problem. Thank you.
Okay, back online, is there anybody online who's interested in giving public comment? Star six to unmute yourself on your phone, raise your hand or turn your video on, and it'll pop to the top for us. I am not seeing anyone. Okay, we will go back into the room, anybody in the room who's interested in giving public comment? Oh, was that Lisa Evans, did you, did you raise your hand? I looked away. Yes, please, Ms. Evans.
Uh, yeah, good afternoon, commissioners. And my name's Lisa Evans, and I live in White Salmon. I just wanted to clarify my comments from last week. I just brought up the results from the test scores of the state of Washington. And I mean, it's, it's, I, you know, from comments towards the end of the, the meeting there, it wasn't really clear, but I, I wasn't sure if you guys had, had maybe taken my comments as an offense and, and some kind of critique of you. What I meant to bring up, the, the reason for bringing up the test scores last week was just simply to bring awareness to them. You know, you guys as the county commissioners, you really do have the big picture over what's happening in the county and all the, and how all the pieces work together. And so my point of bringing up the, the very low test scores in our state was, you know, simply to make you guys aware, so that as you move throughout the county, you're aware of that, and maybe can encourage people or understand and communicate how we are focusing on our children and their education and trying to bring those test scores back up. I mean, you know, the bottom line was COVID was hard, COVID was hard for the schools to try to adjust, you know, for the county to adjust, a lot of things were really pushed down on everybody. And the unfortunate part is just, you know, now we're seeing the fallout, and, and low test scores for our kids is part of that result. So I just wanted to clarify my comments, they were not meant to be an attack on you in any way, or your efforts, or anybody else's efforts, they were just merely to bring awareness to it. Because now that we're aware, that just sort of opens the door for the possibilities and the opportunities to, to take care of our kids, you know, we don't need to wait for Washington to, to try to take the lead on this, and you know, like I said, my, my hope is, just as you guys travel throughout the county, and you hear a lot of different people and what's going on, that, you know, you can just encourage pieces to be brought together to, so we can be really forward-thinking and, and raise our kids' test scores and, and take care of them now that the majority of, of a lot of the COVID, you know, new restrictions and, and all that are, are now kind of behind us. So just sort of looking forward, but like I said, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, it was not meant to be any type of commentary on the job that you're doing. Just more an awareness of, you know, what some of the facts are now at this point, so, thank you.
We will go back into the chambers, anybody else interested in giving public comment? I'll jump up all at once. All right, we will go back online, Elaine Harvey, please.
Good afternoon, Elaine Harvey, live in Goldendale area. I just want to talk a little bit about what's going on at the state level with the House bills, for instance, eighteen seventy-one, with the solar, industrial solar, and these hearings just prove further that there needs to be regulation in industrial, on, on industrial solar in the state, as well as at county, at the county level. And just because, I mean, it's just proven, it's going to the state level where these companies are getting away with whatever they want in other counties, as well as, as Cookett County. It's like, why are we just allowing them to govern our county? And we see counties like Benton County, sorry, that has much more resources than ours. And they realize that they're not equipped or experienced. And this is why we have a more term in place at Benton County. And these big corporations claim to be using best management practices, yet as we all heard from listening to those testimonies in Olympia, that, that these best, best management practices have not even been established yet. And there's false claims throughout these projects that no governing body has offered any checks and balances. And how can we trust the process? We just heard the government agencies and experts testify that our processes are outdated and inefficient. And we should do the right thing and impose more time on all industrial scale solar projects. And yes, I'm reading over the Bluebird D E I S. And I see, I continue to see references to wind. When it's a solar project, and I, and yes, it's in within the E O Z. But, um, you know, I'm going to see more environmental impacts as these projects move towards Goldendale, like the Knight Road or the Hockt Road, where these companies are chasing down landowners, bribing them with contracts. There's going to be impacts to the visual, to the aesthetics and all that in, in our area where we live, and there just a lack, I mean, you guys always, you guys continue to say there's regulations, you guys have county regulations over solar, there is no regulations on solar, these guys are going to get away with whatever they want. And, you know, I did write in whatever they want in their D I S, they can hire all the professionals they want. Yeah, you hire a contractor, they're going to say what you want them to say, because you're paying them the big bucks. And that's how it's going, and that's what I've read so far in the D I S for the Bluebird. So I'm just waiting, and, and I hate to see the day when permits are submitted to the county for, for areas around here, around Goldendale. And, and the environmental impacts that I already can see, because we are near the Simcoe Mountains. And I just, I just can't imagine what's going to happen here, so that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey, for your comment. I will open it up into the room one more time, if anybody's interested. Forward.
Rick Wagner with C's. Like to talk about the Lund Hill Solar Project. Here's the conditions of approval. And it says, the following conditions must be met prior to insuance of any building permits or performance of any land disturbing activities within the solar facility. Lund Hill was permitted August of two thousand and nineteen. The stormwater pollution prevention plan wasn't completed till August of two thousand and twenty. The geotechnical study wasn't completed until two thousand, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty. And the road hall agreement wasn't completed until fifteen months later, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. These were all supposed to be done prior to any permit given to build Lund Hill's solar project. So the big question is, why doesn't the county follow its own guidelines, its own rules? Conditions of approval? Is this the way, is this the way Bluebird's going to be conducted? We have all these ordinances, rules and regulations at the county level, and then the county officials just ignore them. Now, you talked the other couple of weeks about PILT, Payment in lieu of Taxes. That's just another benefit for the solar companies. They want to give you some upfront money to cover the taxes, and in the long run, our county is going to lose money. That's been proven over and over. Brian Walsh tried to get it done down in Gillum County from Avengrid. He may be the guy that's trying to convince you to do it here, but it's not something good for our county. I want to know, too, on the road hall agreement, we were talking about that, I believe, earlier this morning, but I can't understand it because the system doesn't work properly. The road hall agreement, which wasn't done until November two thousand and twenty on Lund Hill, it has a letter of, a letter of credit for only six hundred thousand dollars. Roosevelt Grange has five miles of road construction, six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars per mile. That's three million, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to repair just five miles of the road. There's two other roads involved with this road hall agreement. Why did the county only accept a letter of credit for six hundred thousand dollars? That means the citizens are going to have to pay a good portion of repairing the roads from damages from the trash trucks and the solar trucks. There is a, a grant, but that still leaves the county with, I think it's like one point two million dollars that the citizens must pay. So why wasn't this letter of credit for the solar companies set at a higher amount to cover all the possible damages they've done to the road? Because in the agreement, it says, any and all repairs to the road will be reimbursed to the county. But it calls out the contract. Why doesn't it call out the company, the developer, Avengrid, Next Era, Ember Energy, Cypress Creek? Whoever the developer is, they should be the ones that's responsible for it. When you put the word "the contractor," that doesn't, isn't specific enough. It lets these people off the hook for their financial responsibility, and we, the citizens, will be stuck with it.
Back online. Anybody interested in giving public comments? Star six to unmute yourself. Or turn on your microphone or your video, and we will. It should pop straight to the top or something. All right, I'm not seeing anyone, back into the room. Anybody else, there's two more. Oh, Tracy, online. Public comment, are you interested?
Yes, I am, thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank the board for accepting the idea of, for the sidewalks in Lyle. So thank you for that, and then I just wanted to ask, on the legislative bills going through the Senate right now, there wasn't mention of the five-five-five-five bill? The nine-one-one telecommunications? If you have any information on that, I would appreciate it.
That all you have for public comment, Tracy?
That is all I have.
All righty, I wrote that bill number down, thank you. Back into the room. All right, back online. Anybody interested in public comment? Unmute yourself or star six. Turn your video on. I am not seeing anything. Dan, are you seeing anything? All right. Last chance, and we will go. Nobody else is interested? I will open it up for my seatmates. Commissioner Christopher, would you like to respond to any of the comments today?
Uh, yeah, I'll go first, to Mr. Steve Glass about lowering the mask. I would agree with that. I've mentioned it many times to people, if they're willing to lower their mask, to allow people to hear them better, especially for people with disabilities and hearing. I think it's a good thing, but I will not make it mandatory for someone that doesn't want to lower their mask. So I, I would say that's a speaker's choice on that one, and for Lisa Evans, I wanted to make a comment that I did not take your previous comments as attacks on the board. I, at least myself, understood where you were coming for with school test scores, and I agree with you. Elaine Harvey on the FSSEC moratorium eighteen seventy-one, she may or may not know that I testified in favor of the FSSEC moratorium this morning. But I don't know if she stuck around long enough to hear the next hearing, which was eighteen twelve, which was the governor's streamlining of the asset process, he's trying to make it easier with less public hearings, so we have a long haul to push against the state, so. And then with Tracy on Bill five-five-five-five, the nine-one-one bill, I don't see a lot of opposition on it right now, we'll know more come Thursday, when all the bills have to make it out of committee, that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Christopher, Commissioner Soder.
I will follow up to Ms. Bosque's comment about the closed captioning, is that something that we have been doing and we're not doing?
Never even knew it was a key possibility for Zoom, being Zoom was thrust upon us when it started, when COVID hit. Mr. Wagner actually pointed out that it had been being used, and then it wasn't. How it got changed, I have no idea. I did go into settings and ask it to put that on right after Mr. Wagner let me know that it was not.
Okay. Good, because I certainly, I mean, if we have that option, I hope that we would do it. I don't have any issue with that. As to the sound system, I, I completely agree as far as it is, you know, it, it's hard when we have a, we have technical issues that people are having a hard time hearing, and that is certainly not our goal, and I think we're, you know, we have been trying to work on that, and, you know, our system upgrades, whatever. System upgrades, whatever the cost, have just been backlogged. Our sitting in a. Offline suburb, you know, offshore, in a container ship at this point. And so we're aware of it, and we are trying to fix it. And we will, it will get fixed. To Ms. Evans, yeah, I did, just to clarify, I did not feel like your comments were an attack. On the board personally, I think, uh, I took it from the, the point that you were trying to make. It was not. It was no surprise to me that, uh, school test scores have suffered over the last year and a half with. Uh, kids being remotely and then out of school. So, I mean. Being married to a long-term National Board Certified Teacher. I understand that time in classroom is the absolute best way. Uh, that kids learn, uh, for most kids, and they've had. Far less of that than they typically would, so it was no surprise that our, our test scores. Have declined. Uh, Mr. Wagner. As far as on the Lund Hill, and I, I can't really comment on the you. You're, you're reading from a portion of the agreement. As far as these conditions, I don't know what other stuff is in there that has, um. I don't think Lund Hill, the project, was treated any different than any other project. Um, as to the, we have. It, it's unfortunate that you were unable to hear the conversation apparently this morning. Uh, we did see you online, cuz we have received multiple public records, or what are. Referred to as public records requests. They are really, um. Requests for answers or information versus public records requests about the road hall agreement, the Roosevelt Grade project. We were pretty, we got a pretty good briefing, I felt, from Public Works this morning as to actually what that project cost, where the dollars came from. And we did ask, you know, categorically, is there any, uh, local dollars, the public having to pay for any of that? The answer was no, or if yes, it's, it's minimal. Uh, between the grants, the dollars that the, um, or federal dollars and the dollars that the Roosevelt, the. The landfill company put in for its damage to the road. We were fully covered as to the. Solar farm projects, as the wind farm projects. We learned early on that we have these road hall agreements, so that any. Uh, their route that they're taking, you know, heavy equipment, materials and stuff to these projects. Are all before, if there is a need for heavy maintenance or upgrade to the road to support that effort, that's done in advance of the project. Plus, they also, we, once that's done, we go through. That we determine the condition of the road for the project. We can, we determine the condition of the road after the project. They are liable for any loss of life of that road. And that, as far as I'm assuming, I don't know, the six hundred thousand dollar. Bond that was posted towards that project, we come up with what we think is a reasonable figure. Uh, that's not the company that's coming up with that. And so we, obviously, our folks determined that we thought that that was a reasonable amount of bond to put up. That was, that it was likely to get charged against. So there is no, um. There is no, uh, liability to the local taxpayers for this project or any other project. If there is, then we haven't done our job. Uh, let's see. Tracy, sidewalks in Lisle, yes, uh, obviously, you heard, you were able to hear that conversation this morning. When it was raised, and yes, we are supporting the, um. Application, I wanna be clear, that's all it is, is just an application. For a legislative appropriation for that phase one of that side, uh, sidewalk project in Lisle.
Thank you. And in the last one minute, thank you. Uh, I agree with everything that my seatmate said, and I would further state that. Uh, we did attempt to use a microphone that was provided by the company that we hired to do the sound system. And that microphone would last about thirty seconds, and then it would die. Over and over and over again. We attempted to. I do not believe that the karaoke party machine is going to plug into our multi-thousand dollars list. And that would be the issue. But thank you for your offer, um, and we, uh, continue to ride on the company. I'm seeing the nod from our H R director that we continue to ask them to please come fix the problem. It's, it is ridiculous. It was, for, for the record, it was supposed to be fixed, uh, over one month. And it has still not been fixed. And we are, uh, annoyed as the public, I promise you that. Being as it is, one thirty.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just for clarification, um, I would, I would like to make a recommendation that we do not use. The mic given to us, because we don't know how it will integrate with our system. Uh, who made it, what company made it, and, uh, I don't want to add any potential. Hacks to our I T system, so my recommendation would be to not use the mic.
Moving forward, being as it is one thirty, we have a very important bid opening for the Corky Road. C R P three four two and three four three for the improvement of four point three two miles. Clearing grubbing improvements to horizontal vertical alignments. Collided, shock, more facilities, pressure. All of the words with the contract lines, contract.
Hey, it stands alone. It doesn't need to plug into your system. It's just a speaker. Nope, alright. I tried public.
Hey, Mr. Chair, uh, it appears that we have, uh, three bidders. Okay, first is from James Dean Construction Incorporated, White Salmon, Washington. Addendums one and two are acknowledged. Uh, proposal launch is present. Apologize, I'm a little rusty. Okay, total bid for Schedule A. Six million, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Six comma four nine eight comma nine oh nine point five two. Total for Schedule. B total. Is one dollar and seven cents. So total bid of A and B together, six million, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and fifty-nine cents. Six comma four nine eight comma nine one zero point five nine. Next is Granite Construction Company Vancouver, Washington. Addendums one and two are acknowledged. Bid bond is present. Schedule A total. Seven million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. Seven comma one four nine comma nine nine eight point nine three. Uh, total for Schedule B is also one dollar and seven cents. Making a total bid of seven million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars either. Seven comma one five zero comma zero 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 point zero zero. And our final bid is from Crestline Construction, the Dallas forty. Addendums one and two are. Bid bond is present. Uh, total for Schedule A, nine million, one hundred thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three. And twenty cents. Nine comma one zero zero comma eight seven three point two zero. Schedule B is also one dollar and seven cents. Need a total bid of nine million, one hundred thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. Nine comma one zero zero comma eight seven four point two seven.
Chairman, I would note for the record that the editor's estimate was six million, three hundred and seven, seven thousand even. Uh, I would make a motion to return these bids to Public Works for a review and a recommendation.
I would second the motion.
A motion and a second to, uh, return these to Public Works for their recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Thank you all. Ms. Quinn is available. Director Quinn, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Public Health Director, Quinn.
Yes. Uh, so my update's gonna cover the months of November and December. Um, it's kind of an end of the year closeout. So I'll start with the clinical services update. Uh, we continue to offer our WIC services. We continue to offer those remotely. We serve two hundred and sixteen clients, um, for those, that two-month period. Um, under WIC, we also have our breastfeeding peer counseling program. We now have three individuals that are, um, fully trained and up and running and. And supporting women who are breastfeeding. Um, you have your really good, uh, success rate with that, and really positive feedback from that program. Uh, immunizations, mostly I'll talk about COVID during the Board of Health, so I'll skip over a little bit of that. Um, we are continuing to encourage people to get flu vaccines. I think across the U S, uh, flu up, flu vaccine uptake is a little bit low, and certainly have concerns about what the flu season could look like. Uh, in addition with the COVID case rates we're seeing, so encouraging people to get flu. We've administered two hundred and eight doses to date. That's about our average per year, so. Uh, as far as it, our administration, that's, that's typically about where we sit, but. Still, a lot of people could really, um, benefit from getting their flu vaccine this year. It's definitely not too late. Um, with our COVID vaccine, we continue to do outreach. We did a clinic in Glenwood in December. We had a wonderful turnout, much higher than anticipated. Um, wonderful feedback, got just some beautiful emails from the community out there, so we're really excited to. Have been able to offer that service up there in Glenwood. And then I know last week, um, the staff were up and, or out in Bickleton and Alderdale. And offered some vaccines there as well, so. Our immunizations continue to, we just, that's, that's a big part of what we're doing still right now. Uh, our family planning services, we served thirty-six clients. We just recently applied for a telehealth grant. Um, that would really increase the functionality of our electronic medical record. Um, we already have an electronic medical record, but it's gonna increase, uh, our ability to do telehealth, which we hope will continue to allow us. To do outreach in, um, you know, areas where maybe people have difficulty getting transportation from. Um, I mean, even that could happen just in town, but definitely the outline areas of county hopefully opening services up a little bit for those that live. More on the east side and more towards the north where transportation is, um. Can be a barrier to getting healthcare that people need, so. Potentially, it would fund up to ten thousand dollars of upgrades that would allow us to expand our telehealth, so we should find that out in the next couple of months, uh, if we were awarded that, that money or not. Our perinatal mental health program, we've served twenty-nine families to date. Um, they, it's another program that's been really well received. Um, they would really like to expand the program into Goldendale based on the excess success that they're seeing on the west end of the county. Um, and they do have an individual that's interested. They're looking at, um, asking to, to lead these peer counseling groups and to be trained so that they can do that. And see if we can't get as much, um, engagement and success in Goldendale as we have on the west end for sure, and then we'll look at, um, if we have the opportunity to expand that into other areas. We recently, uh, added naloxone program. Naloxone's used, is the medication that's used for drug overdoses, so this is, will be available to our clients. Um, any client that's at risk or identifies that they have a household member that is at risk for drug overdose. Um, so by request, that, you know, they'd have to come into the office and speak with one of the nurses, and, and, uh, there is no cost for them to have that medication. It's just. Um, just them asking for it. So, um, that's been something that's been in the process for a couple of months. They just got everything all kind of dialed in for that, so. We're really excited to be able to offer that in our office. That's kind of what we got going on for clinical. For environmental health, uh, December is typically a little bit slower, so even though this has been one of the busiest years, or twenty twenty-one. Was one of the busiest years we've had as far as we know, um, to date. Uh, December was definitely a little bit slower. It's not typical for December to be slow with weather and vacations. But we still, we still had a pretty busy year with that. Um, the drinking water lab, or, um, they're writing a proposal. To potentially increase the, uh, I think currently they, um, test for nitrates, coliform, meat, coli, and they're looking at increasing, um. To be able to increase the functionality of their services. I think they would be able to offer iron as one of the, iron testing on the water would be one of the things that they would be able to test for, so. Uh, we're, we're looking at what that would look like and using our foundational public health monies to, um, increase that functionality for the public. Uh, as far as food safety goes, we have Leigh Anne Bergen doing our food safety. She's, uh, finished, I think, her online training and is getting ready to do the actual. There's a lot of field work you have to do before you can get signed off, and so she's. She's getting that taken care of. She's gonna start actually doing the field work. She'll be accompanied by one of our other environmental staff until she's, um. There's a set number you have to do accompanied before you can go out and do your food inspections by yourself, so. Um, she's, she's getting up and running on that, and they're expanding, uh, or they're looking at using MailChimp to do. Outreach with all their food vendors as far as food code updates, um, just general food safety reminders, and then any outreach that they wanna do, so they're putting that program together really well. Um, the environmental health team is also working on expanding their, uh, workflows with SmartGov, with SmartGov. Uh, so that we can increase our digital footprint and decrease our paper footprint. Um, the clinical side is also working on that with their E H R as well, so we're looking at. Being mostly paperless in our office. We still have a couple of months to get towards that, maybe this summer. We should be mostly paper-free and all digital, so. Uh, staff has been working really hard at, at getting those workflows and that scanning done so that we can. Be more efficient in that manner for sure, so. Environmental health team is continuing to support our COVID work. They, you know, they help with our clinics occasionally as far as, you know, flow and check-in and checkout. They've done social media updates, website updates for us. And then this year, this time of year obviously is quiet with, there's no algae blooms with the cold. So I did include the 2020 and 2021 OSS site evaluation numbers in your packet so you could kind of see where we were year-to-date versus where we were last year. And then for Skamania County, I've included their information as well. We definitely are still in discussions about what our engagement with Skamania County is going to look like within the next year and to have it come to any resolution on that at all. So we'll continue those discussions and then update the board as we know more. As far as staffing goes, we're still advertising for clerical admin assistant three. That's a Goldville office position. That would be supporting the front desk. Typically, that position has been mostly environmental health, but would support all the programs of the health department as all of our front desk staff do. So we're just gonna probably look at those. We have some applications. We'll start looking at those in the next couple of weeks. So if someone knows someone that would be a good fit in the Goldville office, we would encourage them to apply. Sherry Call, who's been our immunization nurse and has really driven all of our vaccine, the design of our vaccine clinics, and has done most of the outreach and has really done the travel to the east end and wherever we've been asked to do and has actually been really helpful in anyone that's homebound who's asked for us to give a vaccine in their home. I feel like she's done most of that outreach for us as well. She will be leaving us mid-March. She's going to school to be a midwife. And so she's at the point in her schooling where she needs to be in school full-time. We're very, very, very sorry to see her go. But we will be asking for verbal authorization to advertise her position probably in the next two weeks so that we can typically recruiting nurses isn't as easy as it sounds, especially in public health. So start looking for that individual. And I think as far as otherwise with, that's kind of the clinical environmental health updates. We are still working through the Board of Health, what that will look like July first. The, in the comment period to the state board of health who will actually make the rule was closed January fourteenth. So we're waiting to kind of see what that looks like. We, you know, there's not gonna be a change of who we're probably going to appoint. So someone who's a public health or health facility representative, a consumer of public health or a stakeholder in public health. But I think the process and how we appoint those individuals will likely be addressed in this guidance. So still waiting to see what that final guidance is. And then to again ask the Board of Commissioners to consider reinstating Sue until July first as kind of a gap until then. I just, I feel a little bit uncomfortable having an opening on the board. And I think that with her background, she still would be really helpful in getting us, helping set up the process to get the new people that onboard that will, that the changes will require as of July first. So. Otherwise, any questions? I think that's, that's kind of the roll-up for, for us that's not COVID, which I'll actually cover in my Board of Health update, which is in ten minutes.
So Erin, Commissioner Anderson, so the naloxone or however you say that for overdoses. So if you're a family member, you can come in, talk to you guys and then get a dose that like you can keep in your refrigerator or something?
Yeah.
Okay. And it can be administered. And is it a shot or is?
It is an injection, yeah. And the staff will actually go over with you or the person that comes in how to actually use it. And it does come with some information on, so we're not just throwing it at you at the door. They teach you how to use it so that you know if you're in that unfortunate situation and how to manage that.
Yep, please don't be throwing people.
No. That education.
That is amazing. Thank you for, for you guys doing that. And I hope that, you know, you'll post something on Facebook, let everybody know that that's available. I think that's great.
I don't think they're at the point where they're doing outreach yet, but they're, they're getting close and they will definitely be putting that out. And they've been sharing that information with community partners as well, just letting people know that we have that available. So people can start coming in and asking.
And yeah. Commissioner Christopher.
Uh, yeah. So I, first I want to thank Erin for the outreach to Glenwood, Bickleton and Alderdale. That's very encouraging to me. And I thank you for that. And then also wanted to thank you for your detailed packet of information to us that, like with drinking water, that breaks down how many were in the Goldville vicinity, how many are in the white salmon vicinity. We use that on that tool for many levels. So when that's included in drinking water or sewage, that helps us actually, you know, work with planning going forward too. So thank you for putting those details in there. Other than that, no questions, just keep up the good work.
Thank you. And David puts all that together for me. I can't claim that one.
I figured it was.
I'll let him know.
Mr. Kavanaugh, good job, sir.
Commissioner Soder. Yeah. First, yes, I wanted to echo Commissioner Christopher's. I really appreciate the, the level of specificity in your report. It's great information. And yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh, for the stuff that is not, although you're the boss, you get to take credit because you're responsible when it doesn't go well too. So it's your work both ways. Give as good as you can get, so that's okay. Back to your, your comments. I would like, I would, I would hope the board would have a discussion about your recommendation as far as temporarily filling that position as far as the, the current vacant position on the Board of Health. I initially was less concerned about having that vacancy as I've given this some thought. I do see the benefit of not having that vacancy. And so I would say from my perspective that we may have a difference of opinion on the board. I would be supportive of putting Ms. Pennington, just keeping Ms. Pennington in that role, understanding that that would just be at the latest till July first, that we're gonna have to see what comes. I don't see any changes to the legislation that was passed last year as far as the makeup of what the board is gonna be. But it could be some change. I think we will probably see some changes in the guidance about the, how we go about doing those appointments. And so I would just offer that I think we probably should, the easiest thing to do is a caretaker role. If Ms. Pennington is, I think she's indicated she would be willing to stick around for the next five or six months at the most if we appointed her in that position. And I would be supportive of that. But I would, I'd like to hear from, I think I, from our earlier conversation, I don't think there's a uniform opinion on this across the board.
This is Commissioner Anderson. Did I hear, I wrote it down, so I want to make sure I heard. You stated that Sue, with all of her background, she would be willing to help set up the process for how the changes are gonna take place? Because I know you're, you're just swamped, so. So like for, because we're gonna have this new WAC, we're gonna have to set up policies, new procedures. And she said she'd be willing to help on that?
Yeah, she did. And I, and we had spoken, I don't remember when I spoke with you guys, I think it was two weeks ago. I, I haven't known since of time. But she understood that July first, that she, because Mr. Moyer's position is good until December, that she wouldn't fit in the other two categories and had just offered to cover until that, until that July first. And then help, help me put together, because we're gonna have to write the policy. I mean, it's gonna be on me to write all the policies and procedures to present to you all in accordance with the state board of health rules. And so I think her support would be very valuable.
Well, it is in our minutes that you asked this on our last minutes. You asked it twice. The only way forward is I need to hear a motion. You guys want to do, Dan, do you have any comments?
I couldn't hear what you just said, sir.
I will speak up. I apologize. I'm talking to the screen that I'm looking at. This is over there. So I'll try to, try to talk to the green light. Do you have any, any comments on or opposition to appointing Sue for the short term?
I absolutely do. One concern I have was brought up in, was mentioned two weeks ago that there should be an application process and an interview process. And I think if you have such an interview process, you could be potentially going against what the new rules for the Board of Health are, which are a diverse range of citizens sitting on that board with a diverse range of ideas and ideologies. And I think that would be a good thing as in opposed to a bad thing. So with that, yes, I would, I would, I would be opposed to continuing the status quo.
And for the record, that, that new rule goes into effect in July.
Correct.
July first.
We are, we are not under that implication or that imposition at first. Well, I would entertain a motion if either of you want to make something.
I will make a motion, although I don't want to disrespect Commissioner Christopher's point of view. I don't necessarily disagree that we, we obviously will have to implement the new, the new RCW, the new WAC, the new stuff. I, we want to have diversity on there. My motion will be to accept the director's recommendation, which would be for an interim appointment of Sue Pennington to the Board of Health that will expire on July first.
Is there a second? If not, I will step down and second the motion. Let's move into discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to point out to Ms. Pennington, my vote on this issue has nothing to do with you. I, I think you've done a great job. I think you've served your community well. I wish there were other ways. So please don't take this personally. It has nothing to do with personally for me, but I will have to vote against.
Any further discussion? I would just like to say thank you, Dan, for those kind words. With that, all those in favor of appointing Ms. Pennington for an interim until July first to the Board of Health, if those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Aye. Nay.
So you can't hear me?
When, when you're looking out, yes. When you're looking down, it's hard.
Uh, let the record show, the motion carries and Sue will be able to sit in for the Board of Health meeting here in two minutes. And hopefully she has signed in and was listening.
She is there, sir.
Okay, great. So she did hear, but I have to say, all right. Is there, I guess it's my turn now. Yeah, but that was all yours. I just wanted to say, Ms. Quinn, thank you so much for the detailed report. That is absolutely amazing. It shows the breadth of what a public health is doing, it looks like, in Kilkatank County. We are not just giving COVID-19 shots. We are doing many things and we have done many things before COVID was even a thing. And also thank you to Mr. Kavanaugh for his detailed report. That is the information that helps us do our jobs. And please say, please say thank you and good luck to our nurse who is finalizing her to become a midwife. That is sad to see you go, but congratulations as well. And with that, I will recess the, I will take, take a motion to recess the commissioner meeting for the Board of Health meeting. If anybody would be. So moved, Mr. Chair. I would, I would make a motion to recess the Board of Commissioners meeting to conduct our Board of Health meeting.
I would second the motion.
For the recess, for the Board of Health meeting, does it have to be for one hour?
The meeting will resume following the end of your public health.
I just didn't know that if we had to like create a time. Okay. There's been a motion and a second to recess the commissioner meeting to open up the Board of Health meeting. The commissioner meeting will resume afterwards. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. We will open the Board of Health meeting. And currently, Commissioner Soder, I will hand the gavel to you as you are the chairman. Let me get my.
Just don't use the gavel.
I, yeah, I don't really, I hope not.
For a Board of Health meeting, yeah, I don't know.
It's a goal, right? It's an aspiration. It's always been an aspirational goal of mine to not use the gavel. Since we're standing here, I would like to say. Sir, thank you for putting in your name for the Board of Health position. Absolutely, there is nothing more important than volunteering in your community. In July, we are going to keep your application on file. And it, I've reviewed it after you turned it in today. And we will likely, once Erin and Sue create the process for the appointments and how we're going to do it, we will likely hold interviews with all of the applicants for the positions. So that's when we will be getting in touch with you. And I'm so sorry that it's, so sorry that it's so hard to hear it here. And I would love to take it down when I was speaking, but the last time that the, I believe, our prosecuting attorney was here. He said that there is nothing in the rules that allow us to take it down. We allow people that are communicating, but we're government officials, employees. We're not supposed to, so. Trust me, I really want to be able to take it down. So you could at least read my lips. I just sometimes am more civilly disobedient. You, Mr. Anderson. Okay, I will call the, I will call the Board of Health to order, or first order, businesses approval of the agenda. Hopefully that everyone has got that. Mr. Chairman, I think we need to add to the agenda the nomination for the new chairman, vice chair. So I would, I would ask that we add that to the, okay? I agree. I have a motion, I'll need a second in that.
I would second to add the.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the addition of election of officers for this current year. Any further discussion or other agenda items that need to be added? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, Sue is there, okay. Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Then I guess, let's go ahead and do the minutes first and then I will insert the election right after this. Hopefully everybody have those very detailed minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we approved the Board of Health meeting minutes from October twenty-first, 2021 as presented.
Second. I will second the motion if nobody else is willing to. Okay, I have a motion and a second on adoption of the minutes from October for a health meeting. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Next, election of officers. Open it for, I guess, nominations or discussion.
Mr. Chair, I have a nomination. Mr. Paul.
I, I would like to nominate you, Dave Sauter, to continue as Chair of the Board of Health, particularly at this time, given, uh, we just surpassed our active case numbers. And, uh, we really need consistency, I believe, um, in the Board of Health chairmanship role.
I'll second that motion. Gets me out of it. Too dour, eh? Okay, as the person that is being nominated, I guess I'm still acting as acting Chair, so I'll call it myself. Um, I don't believe, I mean, I guess we, by tradition, the Board Chair serves as Chair, but I know that has not, there is no rule to that and there was, we have not, we have had time, uh, when I first came here, that that actually wasn't the case, but that was some time ago. Uh, I guess at the interim, I mean, I guess I would open it up if there's other, maybe, maybe we'll have a real election. Could be, could be a fight. I would, I mean, uh, I would be willing, I guess, to stay on just for continuity if that's what.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Pennington.
Yeah, this is Sue. Um, yes, I, I think at this time, the continuity would be good. And also, you know, since the Board of Health, uh, will be changing, also you have a history with the Board of Health, um, that, that might be valuable, um, through this coming year. So if you're willing to serve, I think there's a good reason that, uh, that you were nominated. That's all.
Are you seconded? All right, I guess I have a motion and a second to retain the current Chair for another term. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. That will move us to Vice, Vice Chair. It's a good way to build continuity for the future. The floor is open. Hearing, I, I don't think crickets can serve us.
Mister, Mister Chairman, I nominate Paul Moir for Vice Chair.
I'll second the motion. Okay, I have a motion and a second to nominate Paul Moir as Vice Chair of the Board of Health. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Guess I'll keep the gavel for him. Okay, that brings us to COVID-19 discussion. So clinical update. Dr. Person, are you with us?
Yes. Yes, I am. Make sure everything is turned on and, uh, thank you again for the opportunity to, uh, address the Board and discuss, uh, where we are with COVID-19. So the Omicron variant, uh, which has been, uh, dominant in Washington State and has now been identified in Clickatag County as well, uh, is responsible for significant increases in the number of infections and that's affected Clickatag County as well as the rest of Washington State. So looking at our most recent numbers, 799 cases per 100,000 over the last 14 days. We can compare that to where we were, um, in early December, pre-Omicron. We were down to 132 cases per 100,000 over the same 14 days. So significant increase, uh, in our case rate. What's notable about Omicron is that, um, while infection rates have sort of gone through the roof, um, that hasn't translated into that same increase in hospitalizations, which is good news. Um, I will say that is tempered, however, uh, because of the sheer number of Omicron cases, uh, we are still seeing strains in hospital capacity across the state. That's not just due to Omicron, but also to the fact that it is wintertime. Um, so we have people hospitalized with other infections, um, and then also just other illnesses. Um, and that's why, while we know Omicron has a lower severity, um, and we are seeing less disease because more people are vaccinated. We're not yet ready to dismiss everything that we've been doing to try to control this virus. But we do recognize that, um, disease severity is lower and we're seeing that, uh, manifested in, in a number of ways. So for example, school are still in session. There's been no discussion about closing schools just due to uh, the level of where we are with COVID-19 infections. And that wasn't the case if we looked, uh, you know, a year and a half ago where when we had, um, even lower case rates have, because we understand better how disease is transmitted. Um, and again, because of the, uh, number of individuals who are vaccinated, so we have a smaller pool of individuals who are at risk for severe disease. Um, we can still make progress in doing things around trying to keep kids in school. We've adopted the shorter isolation and quarantine guidance in schools as well. So being able to do that in the face of, um, again, much higher case rates due to Omicron is really a recognition that, while we're still dealing with COVID, um, two years into this pandemic, we're not necessarily dealing with it the same way. And this is because as we learn more about the virus and as we learn more about how we can protect others from it, um, we're able to sort of make those changes. If we look at Omicron and, and its, um, patterns across the, I'll say across the globe and, and across the United States, um, we are seeing that nationally, uh, Omicron does appear to have peaked and areas like on the eastern side of the country where they had earlier cases are now seeing those case rates going down. This mirrors what we saw in, uh, South Africa and the United Kingdom where, uh, Omicron had a significantly rapid, uh, rise, um, and then a fairly, uh, rapid decline, although not quite as fast as its rise. Western Washington is starting to see plateauing, uh, in cases. Uh, we anticipate in central and eastern Washington because our, um, the emergence of Omicron was a little bit later, um, that we'll probably continue to see some increase in cases, uh, even in the weeks ahead. We're still have, seeing a fairly high numbers of deaths across the state and that again is because deaths lag behind hospitalizations, which lag behind cases. So many of these are probably still people who were, uh, infected with Delta. We likely won't know the, any of the impacts of Omicron until, um, much later, um, in the next, I'll say several weeks. Um, but again, uh, what we expect to see based on what we've seen in other countries is that the overall severity will be lower. Again, that's a combination, not just of Omicron virus itself, but because we also have more people who are vaccinated. And while we are seeing, um, increased numbers of infections in people who are vaccinated, as well as those who are unvaccinated and as well as those who have been previously infected. The rates of vaccinated individuals who are hospitalized, um, or who are dying is still much lower uh, than those who are unvaccinated. The data from South Africa is showing us that unfortunately, previous infection from COVID-19 uh, is not proving, uh, to provide, um, full immunity, uh, from Omicron or from being reinfected. Uh, we knew that was true earlier. Uh, Omicron, because of its very high case rates and because of its very high level of infectivity, uh, has really driven that point home. Um, in South Africa, they were actually seeing higher risks of being reinfected, uh, with Omicron rather than primary infections. Again, that's likely because South Africa has a relatively higher, uh, rate of people who are vaccinated, uh, so who were, uh, protected. Uh, but with Omicron, they are seeing people who are, uh, having not just their second infection, but even third or fourth infection. Um, so we know, um, again, immunity to COVID-19 is not absolute, whether from prior infection or from vaccination. Uh, that's again, why we use the other, uh, mitigation measures and including, uh, the use of a well-fitting, uh, mask to help, uh, drop the spread. Uh, but as I said, even while we are in the midst of this surge, there are still those discussions going on about, um, what moving away from COVID as a pandemic to COVID as just uh, another one of the many respiratory viruses we deal with every year, um, is still going on. Uh, and we expect those conversations will continue. And that is it for my update. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Person, any questions for Dr. Person? Commissioner Anderson. Uh, are we still seeing Delta cases, um, in Washington that are new or is it just straight home?
Right now, based on, um, the sequencing data, which we unfortunately don't have the capacity to sequence every specimen, but, uh, they really have switched to being a hundred percent, uh, Omicron. I'll say, based on the clinical patterns of, uh, disease that we're seeing, I do believe there is still Delta out there because we do see, uh, some cases or some outbreaks where spread is very rapid, as we would expect to see with Omicron, but we've also, in some of the other counties that I cover, seen times where there can be a number of days in between uh, infection, and that's a pattern. That's much more common with Delta. So, uh, I would say Delta is still present, uh, although definitely not, uh, in the majority.
Yeah, um, so there's a new term, the, the flu, so having the flu and the coronavirus. Are we seeing that? Do we have many flu cases in Washington or within your jurisdiction?
Uh, influenza activity is still, um, low, uh, because, uh, influenza itself is not, uh, fully a reportable disease, only if there are deaths due to influenza or novel strains. Uh, I would say we don't have great reporting on it. I will say in the other counties that I, I cover, because they're a little bit larger, um, we do get, uh, voluntary reports from labs. So we have seen people who have been, uh, co-infected with Omicron, or sorry, co-infected with COVID and with influenza. Um, so we do know it, it is occurring. Not enough to say whether it's any more, uh, severe or any more different than others. Uh, but that is a reminder to, um, providers that it's, uh, important to be checking for both of those. Uh, and also the reminder that, um, we have vaccines to cover both, uh, flu and COVID-19, and it's important to get both of those.
Okay, and my, my last one is, uh, so there is not the same increase in hospitalizations. And then there's just the sheer number of Omicron cases. Uh, so my question B is, is we have this estimate of what we, what are the active cases? But we know that most people, because it's not putting you in the hospital, you're just taking an at-home test. And unless you're self-reported, do we have any idea of what we think statistically, what the true number cases per thousand are or per hundred thousand? Being that so many of us take the test at home, we don't tell you. Sorry, Dan.
Yeah, no, I, I, you know, I think you're, you're absolutely right. And, and I will say that's also why we're seeing changes in what's being, uh, what likely will be ultimately required for reporting, because we know the numbers that are being reported don't reflect the, uh, true incidence of COVID-19 because more people are getting, uh, at-home tests. The various, uh, groups that do modeling have tried to, uh, come up with some numbers for the, um, prevalence, um, and, and the ones I've seen, uh, they sort of vary quite a bit, but some of them are, are pretty high. I mean, you know, estimating that anywhere from one to five percent of the population is being, uh, infected with Omicron every day. So yeah, I would say our reported numbers, uh, significantly underestimate, um, how much infection is out there, which I'll say is probably also, uh, a, a better sign, um, for its impact on on hospitalizations. Um, and the one other thing I do want to add with hospitals is, um, what's different now that, um, we're hearing more reports about isn't so much the shortages of ICU beds as it is, uh, the number of people that are flooding the emergency rooms. Um, so again, not people that are severely ill, uh, but people that are uh, sort of seeking care, uh, and sometimes they're just going to the emergency room because they need a, a test. So, um, there's been quite a bit of messaging from the Washington State Medical Association and, and from others trying to encourage people to really only seek, um, emergency room care if it's, uh, warranted and not just because you, you need a test for COVID-19.
Go ahead. My last one, I swear this. Uh, and this one is on our website and this might be for, for Director Quinn. It shows, you know, your active cases with the change in the, the variants and the recommendations from the CDC. How long are you now active? Is it still 14 days from it or what is the?
No, I can answer that one. So the current guidance is for five days. Um, there was a little blip yesterday because we had, we were inundated with so many cases. We just added them. We weren't able to recover them. They're working through recovering them today. I think currently they're tracking about a hundred and five, 102, 105 cases as active, uh, as of yesterday. I think it was still in the 250 ring.
But, but that's only for five days and we used to have 105 days or 105 cases for 14 days. Before we look at it, it's, you know, three times the amount currently infected that we. Okay, other questions for Dr. Person?
Mr. Chairman?
Dan, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I would like to, to echo what Commissioner Anderson said about the under-reporting uh, of tests. I have not had a COVID test, but as you can see, I'm not there today. Uh, but I also don't feel it necessary to drive into a pharmacy and pick up a test and possibly put someone at risk of whatever I have. So I don't need a test, uh, which more than likely I have COVID. Uh, so there's going to be a huge percentage of the population that has something, um, that is not going to be reporting on our numbers. So I mean, on a good note of that, I think there's going to be a, a herd immunity out of this. Uh, but Commissioner Anderson was dead on right with that. I have one question for Dr. Persons. And that is, I haven't heard much about a, an X-ray variant or a Zulu variant or something else across the pond coming in the next three months. Have you heard of anything anywhere? A variant that has any kind of legs to it?
No, that, not at this time. Have there, uh, United Kingdom is reporting a subvariant, what looks to be a subvariant of Omicron, I believe that's, uh, B dot A dot two, um, but that's fairly early on. Um, I will say the, the challenge with trying to predict the next variant is there, um, is not a predictable way, uh, in which this virus mutates. So I unfortunately probably aren't going to have advanced notice. Um, if there, there is one, we'll, we'll know about it when it, um, shows up in changes in, uh, the genotyping. So they'll find a a COVID-19 infection that doesn't match the, the current. a COVID-19 infection that doesn't match the current genotypes. And then I just wanted to echo that you're absolutely right. I think as COVID switches from sort of pandemic mode to sort of the endemic mode, we'll see this change in that people won't necessarily need to be tested. The hope will be that they are doing what it looks to be that you're doing, which is that if you're sick, you're staying home and until you feel better. And so I think that's helping sort of COVID kind of naturally evolve into a virus that we manage differently. And I think we will see that in the upcoming days or weeks that there are already discussions and there's already been things coming from the Council for State and Territorial Epidemiologists, which is one of the organizations that helps to define what is necessary for surveillance and reporting. And they've already started the discussion about whether we do need to track every single case of COVID or whether we can start to now just focus on the ones that may have the greatest impact. So people who are hospitalized or people who are dying from it.
Thank you. One more question that you just kind of brought up. But before I get to that, I'll point out that I have had two vaccines. Still got whatever I got, so it's possible. The spread of COVID, I was reading something that you're you can spread the disease essentially before you even have symptoms. And then when you have the symptoms, you're really not spreading the disease anymore. Is that propaganda on the internet or what's your, when are you actually spreading COVID if you have COVID?
With Omicron, it does actually look like you are spreading one to two days before you become infected and then can continue to spread for a couple of days after symptoms start. I'll say this is true of a lot of viruses that you are actually contagious prior to symptom onset. So this isn't new with COVID-19. But with Omicron, we have seen a shift where more people do seem to be infectious earlier on. So again, even before symptoms show up and then within the first couple of days. That's part of why they shortened the isolation period, because more people were tending not to be as infectious later on, you know, after six, seven, eight, nine, 10 days, even though they may have some symptoms. So yeah, symptoms alone are not a great predictor of infectiousness.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so with that, the fact that you can spread it before you show any symptoms, are you still likely to pop positive? If you have no symptoms, but you're spreading it?
Oh, I will say. Yeah, I think here's, I'll say, it's not a whole new can of worms, but this is where there's a little of the difference between the types of tests. So the PCR tests, which are more sensitive and can detect virus at a lower amount, those likely will be positive when you're infectious, but before you're symptomatic. The rapid tests are not as likely to do that. I think that has been one of the challenges with Omicron, because it's progression from you've been exposed to infected and infectious to better is much, is much more rapid. You can test negative with a at-home test or a rapid antigen test one day and test positive the the next day, which means that you may test negative when you are infectious. And again, that's part of why when we still have fairly high transmission levels, the recommendations are to continue to do those other things that make it less likely for you to spread, unknowingly spread a viral infection to others. And that's, you know, including again the use of the masks and then you know, trying to limit being in situations where you're likely to be exposed to lots of people who may have COVID.
Good. Other Board of Health members, questions for Dr. Person?
I have one more, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Christopher.
How long would you, I know there's no real numbers, but if you did, how long after being in contact do you then come down with the symptoms? Could it be a week later? Or is there a shorter timeframe or is it just wide open?
You know, I'll say the total range is probably a little wide open. And you know, the original quarantine period for COVID was 14 days. And that's because you could have people that up to two weeks after exposure before they became infected with Omicron. It does appear to be much shorter, and that's why that quarantine period has been shortened. It does look like on average, it's around what I've seen, three to four days from the time that you're exposed until the time that you're infected with Omicron. So again, it's shorter. Other things can impact that. You know, again, if you're immunocompromised, you unfortunately it may be several days after exposure before you become infected.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Dr. Person, having to do with the at-home tests, the rapid tests. If, you know, if it's a pretty clear positive, assuming that, you know, the person has done it according to directions, that is a pretty good indicator that there is a significant virus level, viral load to pass it on to others. Would you agree with that? In general?
Yes, the rapid tests, again, they're not, or the at-home tests are not as good at picking up very low levels of things, but they are felt to be a pretty good marker for your infectivity, because that is dependent on how much virus you have in your system. And because those tests require more virus to be present in order to turn positive, they are a good indicator for when you have COVID and are infectious with it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson? So then are you saying, Dr. Person, that even though you're supposed to stay there for five days after symptoms, you probably shouldn't go back to work until it's, until that home test is saying negative?
I'll put it this way, actually, there's some really good data from the United Kingdom, because, you know, since they've got a centralized health system, they do a lot more tracking of stuff than than we do here. And they have shown that after five days, about 31% of people will still be positive, will still be infectious. If you get a negative test at day five, that drops it down to about between 7 and 10%. So again, I, I think there is still some risk, and I would say that's why we don't just rely on after five days is fine to go out and do things. That's why we still talk about, you know, wearing your mask, you know, again, being conscious of the fact that you have just, you were just infected with Omicron, or I'm sorry, not with Omicron, with COVID-19. And if you haven't tested yourself to see if you're negative, there is that possibility. Again, two, two years into this and with something that's highly transmissible, keeping everybody out for 10 days. You'd run out of people to do anything. I mean, you know, I think lots of places are already struggling with that. So we do have to have some of that balance. And we can have that balance with Omicron, because again, it does not appear to be as severe. And as more and more of the population gets vaccinated, those are at the, who are at the highest risk do have a way to afford themselves some additional protection.
Any other question? This is a great asset for us, having Dr. Person just available to answer questions. It's wonderful. If there are none, I will move on to Director Quinn, the situation report, which is nothing but rainbows and positive stuff, so.
Yes, I appreciate your optimism.
The end is coming.
Yeah, it is coming, but not quite yet. I think if you look at the packet I gave you last week that I prepared on the 18th, the case numbers have significantly changed. So our total case count is now, when I looked before lunch was 2960. I know they're still working on it, and I anticipate it's probably even higher than that by now. This is the most cases last week, the week of the 16th. So I track cases by week, so it'd be the 16th through the whatever day Sunday was. I think that was the 23rd, 22nd, sorry. We had 247 cases, which is the most cases we've ever had in a one-week period. And as I think Dan asked the question, Jake also asked or alluded to with the home test kits, that's not a true representation of what we potentially think is actually happening in the county. So to consider that our case rates are at the worst they've ever been. We did, I think I talked, we had around 102, 105 cases that are active right now. They cleared all the, all the five-day ones this morning that they considered recovered. And there was an additional death last week, so we do stand at 39 deaths in our county. I think there's three people were hospitalized when I looked this morning, so. The good news is, to date, we've given 29,963 vaccines. I think that's a little over 600 more than I told you last week, so that's impressive for us. Although, to be fair, it is 43.5% of our total population is vaccinated, which keeps us right on trend with our 0.1% every week. So and we have given 45, over 4,500 boosters throughout the county. So people are definitely getting that. In the, in my update, I did list that Click Tech County has given 8,300 of those vaccines. And we, again, for the people that didn't hear the update, have gone out into the communities that have invited us to come into their communities. So we've been out in Bickleton, Alderdale, and Glenwood in the last two months to help have access to the vaccine. As far as contact investigation and we have turned that mostly over to the state, so the state is doing most of the case investigations for us right now. They are prioritizing those over 70 and people under 20. So some people may not actually get calls before they're recovered. So encouraging people to keep kind of up on the information as it's put out of how to best manage themselves. So and you just had a nice discussion about when to come back to work. I think most people were asking to speak with their employer and what their level of comfort is for someone to come back. And then our job is just do help and help educate them what that might look like. We do not provide testing as a service right now at the Health Department. We have been, however, been handing out home test kits at our vaccine clinics. And for people that have just called and asked us for one, we've handed out about 1,000 case test kits through our office to date. We have more coming. We'll continue to distribute those to the community as they become available. I'm pretty sure they took some out to Bickleton last week, so they'll have a stash out there for people that need to use them. We're asking that people not report their home tests to us. The state, as far as I know, still considers that a presumptive case, not a true case, which we could argue that all day, but we're not going to. So you can report your home test kit. There's instructions on the test kit that says how to report that to the state, and they'll accept that in their case counts. We have been distributing masks at our clinic, at our vaccine clinics as well with the the home test kit. So our vaccine clinics definitely seen a downturn in interest. We're Tuesdays in Goldendale, we still do vaccines there, and then Thursdays in White Salmon. If that's timeframe that doesn't work for someone, we're still able to accommodate for the homebound, we've been able to accommodate those. And then for people who have scheduling issues, the nurses have been just fabulous about making sure that they can get the vaccine to that person in either their place or their timeline. So access is not, is not a concern for them. With all the changes in the case counts, I think starting February 1st, we're going to update our numbers on our website once weekly rather than daily. I think they already put a little thing on there that says this case counts don't accurately represent the true disease state in our county, given the prolific nature of home test kits. For those of folks that have not seen, people could order home test kits through the USPS starting last week. And Washington State Department of Health also has a website that's available that you can order your home test kits through them. So as those test kits become more prolific, and I think I heard somebody today say it's just like having a Band-Aid in your medicine cabinet. So you know, just use those when you need. We continue to engage weekly with the schools and with other community partners. So I think, let's see, that's it. So I have asked our healthcare partners to give quick updates about how they're doing it in their roles. And you know, we're just really grateful for the, both hospitals and for North Shore Medical Clinic. They've, everybody's been so collaborative and we're so grateful. And I, you know, even on bad days in this county, I think that we've, we've done a better job than most other counties. And I'm regularly asked how I get all of our people at the table from other state agencies. So I think to be really proud of the, of the commitment of our partners and the partnership we have. So the KVH actually just started doing some monoclonal antibody therapy. And I've asked them to give a quick rundown of how they're doing. So I don't know who's going to provide that update, but I'm pretty sure a couple of them are here.
Hi, this is Kaylee Chui. I'm the infection prevention nurse at KVH, and I also do outpatient infusions. So recent, up until recently, we've been offering two different formulas of the monoclonal antibodies, Regeneron and one called GMSD. And FDA came out and said that those are not effective against Omicron. And we were lucky enough to get some doses of Cetrovamab, which is the only one authorized for use right now. So we have gotten two shipments actually, and we feel very confident that we'll be able to keep getting those. And we've begun administering them in the ER as well as offering it as an outpatient infusion service. We've only had, I think, two administrations so far. I had a couple outpatient scheduled that they started feeling better, and they said they didn't need it by the time that day came around. But we have it available to them. And they have to meet, it's a pretty strict criteria. It's within 10 days of their diagnosis, and they have to be high-risk for severe illness. It's not too hard to meet that high-risk criteria. There's a lot of comorbidities, illnesses that qualify you for that, even just older age, obesity, diabetes, you know, COPD, things like that. So there's definitely a large population that would be eligible to get it. And they, we developed a handout for when they are tested at the drive-up clinic or in the ER that tells them those options and to just speak with their PCP about receiving that. Do you guys have any questions about it or anything?
Any questions?
Is anyone else from KVH going to do an update, or are you going to just do the monoclonal antibodies part?
I can share some of our testing numbers with you if you'd like. So so far, as of yesterday, I calculated it for January, we've done 500, had 500 resulted tests, 41 were still pending. Of those 500, 175 were positive. And comparing that with the entire month of December, we had 63 positives out of 392 tests performed. So we're definitely seeing an increase. We've still got a week left of January. That's it for those numbers that I have. We have one hospitalized right now.
This is Commissioner Christopher. I have a question for you. Why, why so many negative tests? Are, is the general public just showing up because they feel bad at test? Or are they, that they're something, why so many negatives?
It could be exposure testing or symptoms, and it's just, you know, there was an upper respiratory cold going around. A lot of people thought they had COVID. It kind of looked like that, and then they were negative. So yeah, I'm not really sure. We, we've been pretty steady with our number of tests until this month. It's definitely kicked up and a lot more positives this month.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Erin, you want?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sue, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
I did know, that's okay. I, um, I'm wondering, and this may come out, I'm wondering how each of our hospitals in the county are impacted by the Omicron wave here, and, you know, in terms of, we already know that it's a stress on emergency rooms and, and so forth, and, you know, it will be good to get an update from each of those to, so we understand more thoroughly how that's impacting our, you know, our locality.
Yeah, it, it's affecting our, our emergency room centers, definitely a lot more visits. Like, somebody said, Dr. Pearson said previously, just wanting tests or having symptoms. And then our staff, we've had a lot more positive staff members compared to the last couple of months, just because of the rate of positives for the whole county, and so that's been really hard of trying to just staff the ER and the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy, are you on to do an update for North Shore?
Hi, yes, this is Cindy. We're doing a lot of testing at the clinic as well, about five-hundred in January so far, about two-fifty of those being positive. We've distributed about a thousand at-home test kits. Those have mostly gone to essential workers that we focused on, and then about twenty-five air purifiers to local small businesses as well. And then, as Erin talked about, we're working with the Health Department and then the, both Skyline and KVH to get more tests and get as many of those at home as we can get as possible. And then on the vaccine front, we've done about five-hundred COVID vaccinations so far for kids, five to eleven. And finally, we had a really successful vaccine event that we we coordinated with WOGAP and Comunisabes. It was on January fifteenth, a couple of weeks ago, and it was focused really on Hispanic community outreach, and we completed about two-hundred-and-twenty vaccines, which was really busy, three-hour afternoon that day.
Rob, are you on for Skyline? Would you want to give an update?
Sure, yeah, I'm, I'm here. So, Skyline also did receive a shipment of the Strovo, Sotrovamab, which is a monoclonal antibody that is working on Omicron, so, so we have that also, and I'm not sure if we've done any infusions yet, but and, and the, the, the main use for, for this monoclonal antibody is for people who are, are sick, but not sick enough to be hospitalized, to prevent them from getting to that point where they would need to be hospitalized. You know, the, the only thing I have to add, in addition to, to KVH's report and Cindy's report, is, on the staffing, you know, healthcare staffing has been a challenge for many months now, across the country, you know, just like a, a lot of other business sectors. But Omicron has really hit us hard, too, with, you know, Skyline and KVH aren't real big hospitals, so if we have one or two nurses out because they're sick and they can't work, that puts a big burden on us, and we have had to limit our admissions to the hospital occasionally because of that, because we're down to maybe one night shift nurse in the hospital. But, you know, overall, we're doing okay here. We're able to take care of the patients that come in. The biggest challenge we're having is transferring patients to bigger hospitals in the Portland and Vancouver area, which is directly related to their staffing capacity, because they're having a lot of employees come down with Omicron, and that limits the number of transfers they can accept. So we're running into situations where we are seeing patients admitted to our hospital who really should be in an intensive care unit in a bigger hospital, but there aren't any beds available. And, you know, and, and we're reaching out to Seattle, to Idaho, and, and still not being able to find any beds. So we're, we're, you know, we're taking care of patients and keeping them here until we can find the, the appropriate level of care. But that, that, that's really a big challenge for us. We, we are seeing a good share of sick COVID-positive patients in our emergency department. Occasionally admitting those patients to the hospital and taking care of them till they're, they can go home. So we're, we're hoping we get past this soon, things get better, but, yeah, it's, with, with the cases spiking right now, it's, it's definitely a challenge. Not just to Click-Tech County, but across the Northwest.
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah.
Any, I was just gonna say thank you, and are there any questions for the board of health members for our providers or partners?
No, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say a heartfelt thanks, which I know it sounds repetitive, but you know, but we have a community here that is responding very, very well with whatever we have, and, you know, I'm, I'm proud of that, so thanks to all of you.
I would echo that. Okay, anything else, Erin?
No, pending your questions, that's my update. The only last item of business is that I'm gonna just present to the board to put, every year we have to publish a meeting schedule, so I plan, much like we did last year, to publish a quarterly meeting schedule with the understanding that you, I, or any board of health member can ask for a board of health meeting as needed. But we did publish a quarterly schedule last year, and I'd like to do the same thing again. I'd like to work with Lee to coordinate them with my updates, so they're kind of on the same, same day, so it'd be in probably March, July, and October. So if there's any concerns about that, otherwise I'll, I'll work with Lee to get those scheduled.
Comments from Board of Health?
This is Commissioner Christopher. I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure we have enough time for citizen questions.
Right. Little reserve. We just won't go back to the other meeting till we give the citizens their time. Yeah, I just, I would like to say, it finally feels like, I know we have more cases than ever. Finally feels like we're getting hospitalization rates are down. The fact that, you know, we've been into this for two years, and our death rate in Click-Tech County is zero-point-one-seven percent with the most recent death. I think that that goes to show how great of a job all of our providers have done, and how we have worked as one large team, and I can't thank our providers enough. Here, here. Okay, any other board member comments or questions? Hearing none, and then we will move into public access to the board. So this is public comment for the public to address the Board of Health. Start in the room, give a couple folks. Okay, I will go online. If there is somebody online which provides public comment to the Board of Health, raise your hand, star six, if you are on phone, unmute yourself. Okay. I'm not seeing anybody. Anything else? At first I'd say I'm fine with the quarterly meetings. I hope, in the not-too-distant future, the Board of Health could become the Board of Health, not the Board of COVID. We, we used to have all kinds of other topics that we talked about. There's like, for the last two years, we've talked of nothing else. The Board of Health is just completely focused, as it should be, has been a challenging last couple of years. If there is nothing else for the good of the order, I would accept the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn the Board of Health meeting. Any discussion on? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all, folks that were participating, Board of Health members. Thank you, Sue, for stepping in, willing to serve for a little bit longer. I thank you, Commissioner Christopher, for your, your respectful dissent or in that, and thank you to Erin for logging in during your day off. We don't want to rat you out, but you are on vacation.
Don't worry, I'm going golfing after this, it's fine.
All right, go golf, have fun, all right, thank you. We are adjourned. The Board of Health is adjourned. What, Commissioner Chair, can we take a break? Just a sec.
They will reconvene at three o'clock. Those two people are locking up.
Jacob, did I, when you were speaking to me earlier? It's Monday, you have, you have to.
Yes.
It's good, it's great here.
Oh, good to know. I didn't know it was windy there.
Getting involved.
Nice, well, thank you.
Thank you. Being as it is, three o'clock, we are going to re-lead the meeting. That can be for many commissioners. I would just like to say that was a big board assault. And I would also like to point out that I am really sorry that the audio quality is what it is, but we, of course, remind everybody to come sit in first, if you want to be able to hear us as well, as has been the case for the last eighteen years, and I will say, though, that I did get an update that Avidex is supposed to be here, supposed to be here the rest of this week, installing the lights. Notice supposed to.
Woo-hoo!
Yeah, but we have, there is hope. So that's my, my positive update. Moving on. Consent? I'm ready for consent. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, all ten items.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve consent agenda with ten items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Bills? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve KEstimate number four to Interstate Concrete that asphalt company in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents for the Roosevelt Grade Road-related project.
I would second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye to approve KEstimate number four to Interstate Concrete.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Oh, say, I know I have. They're on here, but you smart. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants at the amount of six-hundred-and-ten-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and ninety-three cents for the date ending January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Yes, there are no payable benefit warrants at that time.
I would second the motion.
This is, and these are for twenty-one AP, that's what they should put out. There's a motion and a second to pay the accounts payable warrants for twenty-twenty-one, the amount of six-hundred-and-ten-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and ninety-three cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, okay, and next, we also have account payable warrants at the amount of sixty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and eighty cents, eighty cents, and payroll benefit warrants, the amount of one-million-one-hundred-and-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents for the date ending January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. These are the twenty, the AP is twenty-two week. My motion is over.
I would second the motion and also thank my seatmate for reading all of them.
There is a motion and a second to approve the accounts payable warrant, warrants for twenty-twenty-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Business. Commissioner Christopher, do you have anything for board pending?
Yeah. Kind of something I'll bring up with you guys before we talk about it with Public Works. As I was sitting in my office most of the days last week and the week before, there was an awful lot of elderly with handicap placards trying to park in the electric parking spot out there, and then backing up and trying to find a new spot. So while I appreciate the, the sign that a lot leaves that space open, I think the board might want to consider changing it from electric vehicle parking only to a thirty-minute parking only, so that hopefully we can better address ease of access. I've had a couple of senior complaints that they don't like getting into the handicap spots and, in the side parking lot, just because it's harder to park for them. Where a nice diagonal spot right there would be nice, so keep your thoughts open to changing that to a thirty-minute parking spot.
Would it make more sense to change some of, a couple of the other P-spots next to the electric car park, be it to thirty minutes?
I, I'm open. I, I'm open. Uh, it's just that one's right on the end and they don't have to worry about hitting cars on either side of them. Um. It's, it's interesting. If you sit in that office and look out the window and watch them pulling into that parking spot at about a third of one mile per hour, uh, you can tell why they have concerns about parking in the other handicap spots. Um, I don't know that it necessarily matters. Uh, that's why I was just kind of recommending changing that one spot to 30-minute parking. See how it works. We're gonna have to change our thinking over the course of six months, so I'm kind of open. Um, I just don't want to see too many parking spots like the electric one that is just unoccupied.
But then again, if you have somebody parking in the electric spot, doesn't have an electric car or your electric car takes 30 minutes to charge, that doesn't make much sense.
I only got about half of what you said, so I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. More discussion later. I'm, I'm gonna ponder that one.
Yeah, as I said, just think about it. Um, I didn't know if you guys had any input on the Chris Corey decommissioning bill that will be hearing testimony at the end of this week? Um, or if you had any input on that one? Um, other than that, everything else I have can wait until next week when hopefully I'm there after a positive or a negative COVID test.
Keep it safe, buddy.
I, I will take a test before I come back. That, that was gonna bring in another question. I don't know, is Rob in the room?
No.
Uh, cause that was gonna bring up another question. If somebody's out, um, like our county employees that, that, uh, we have the FMLA, if they're out on COVID, do we require our employees to provide proof of a negative COVID test before they come back to work? So that's a question I'm gonna have for staff next week, uh, um, get to the bottom of. Other than that, I have nothing further.
Mr. Shutter? Yeah, I did. If, if my seatmates will indulge me, I was hoping to have a little more because we were pretty short on time. Uh, when Mr. Harpole made several comments and questions or, or about, although he did it in a minute 30 seconds, so if he had more time. I was just hoping to have a little bit of a conversation or maybe an update as far as the, um, what's going on with the sandbar access and update with that committee continues to be, when you serve on that committee. We did, uh, we met with the Forest Service again. I don't know if it was last, it seemed like it was just last week, but maybe it was the week before. Uh, that was the meeting to, um, visit with the Forest Service after they had had a meeting uh, with some tribal fisheries people. This was to get the, uh, tribe's perspective on the potential for legal access to the sandbar, to the sand spit in Lisle. Uh, not surprisingly, the tribe was less than enthusiastic, or I want to say the fisheries folks. I don't want, they weren't speaking to the tribe. It was the fisheries folks, uh, were less than enthusiastic, I would say. They have some, um, there is some long-range plans for some enhancements of that area. Uh, dredging of the, the Clickitap, the, the channel itself. And then, uh, from what I understood, raising the, kind of the sandbar, kind of create an uplift there, uh, and, um, although they didn't say that necessarily the two uses, meaning the recreational use and the, uh, fisheries use were incompatible with each other because that was one of the questions I had to kind of charge the Forest Service with. You know, just be upfront as far as if this, if it's a, if it's a no-go from that perspective, I would rather know it now upfront. Which we did not hear that. And so the committee is continuing to work forward. As Vern said, we have been waiting heat, we actually burn. Uh, Mr. Harpole, I've been trying to get some, um, information specific to the Forest Service purchase of that property from the stars in, I believe it was 90 or 91, uh, when the Forest Service acquired that property, which includes the, uh, land out in the river of the sandbar. Um. Because we have actually inquired, tried to get some of that information from the Forest Service. They have been, don't seem to have ready access to it, which I, I don't know is entirely credible to me that, uh, it would just be a question of you. I know they have their rent records when they, uh, when they acquire, there would have been title insurance, a title report, everything would have been, done when they acquired that in the 90s. It would just be a question of trying to find those records. He did try to get some, uh, information out of the title companies. He said Amerititle. I, I am frustrated to hear Vern if you're on the call uh, or on the Zoom that they, I was concerned because I know the difficulty we've had getting, um, uh, work done by, they're just overwhelmed right now. And so I'm not surprised. Uh, so I will be working for Vern. See, because these are not, the title company has the records. That doesn't mean, they're, they just have a copy of all the records that we have. That means it is here. When he was referring to doing it the old-fashioned way, uh, that's what he's talking about. So we will be, uh, see what we've got to do. And the reason we're interested in those title records is there is some indication in the record that there was a problem, was and maybe still is a legal crossing, um, back from the, you know, when the railroad was built, uh, because that property is on both sides that any self-respecting owner would have kept some way to legally cross, uh, to their property considering the, the other access was from the river. Uh, and so I had suggested we really want to nail that down because that would totally change the conversation uh, with the Forest Service and certainly the railroad. Uh, and the idea that the railroad road would just volunteer that there is, because I have seen, uh, Vern was able to get some records out of the Forest Service and there is a reference to, uh, a crossing. It's old. I mean, it's in the, like, early 1900s, but it, it, uh, based on my, um, uh, looking at the description of where it is, it's suspiciously close to where the informed crossing is now. Um, and so we want to really nail that down because again, that would be a completely different conversation uh, with them. And so we are gonna be working on that. We have continued to struggle to have, to have any kind of contact with BNSF as to, because they have been, and this is just anecdotal. We've all noticed if you drive down the, on the Washington side, they have been changing out the bridges and rebuilding them. They're working their way up. There was an early indication with the, um, underpass at Vingeon, uh, that Gordy, it's been pushed and pushed and pushed, was that one of the reasons they gave for the first couple of times was that the crew, the folk, because they will construct the underpass, the railroad, will do it for, for a lot, a lot of money. That, that, there, there was, uh, they needed more time because the work had not been completed on the other stuff, which they, they were at that point, they were building the, the new bridge on the little White Salmon River. Um, I don't know if they have plans for the whites, the main stem, the White Salmon, and then keep moving up. I don't know. So we were hoping to make some kind of contact with them to, would you share your plan for your capital improvements? Because it could be a really good opportunity. If they're gonna just replace the bridge at Lisle in the next five years, incorporate a, a design it with the underpass or an overpass or something in it, but we've been kind of stung by, um, BNSF. And so I'm hoping, uh, we had some contacts. I've spoken upstairs, talked to Gordy when we were doing the, uh, working with him while, you know, he shared his frustration this morning with the, the underpass, that there were some connections made with BNSF on that. And we're just trying to, who did, who did we talk to? Can't we talk to? Uh, and then to his last question, I would hope at some point the chair would entertain whether there's some more, because there are, there's, there's, uh, probably four or five members of the committee that are meeting regularly and putting a lot of work into it. I'm really more in a supporting role, but I think they would like the opportunity at some point to be able to come and just kind of present, uh, from, and they are, uh, they are, um, I guess empowered or acknowledged by the community council. They would like to come and just give a report, uh, to the board as far as what their efforts are and maybe, maybe a little bit to their frustration. There is no ask for dollars. There's no ask for resources. I wanted to be clear about that. It was just a report. Yeah, right. Let's all be honest. So.
Question? Uh, you mentioned dredging. Are they just gonna dredge up to the bridge, actually the river channel part up to the bridge? Or are they actually going up the Clickitap River? And did they give you a timeframe for when they were planning on doing that dredge?
Uh, no, I don't, I couldn't comment on that. Again, it was secondhand from the Forest Service that there, but there are plans in the works. They, I don't know that they, we actually asked for that as to like, you'd like to see at least a rudimentary drawing of what you're planning and the plantings on the shore. Because we have argued that that's great. I think both activities are certainly compatible. That the, uh, kiteboarding takes place, you know, far to the west, a wave does not need to take place. And if, uh, if the Clickitap, the kind of estuary in that area needs to be completely off limits because of the fishery, that's, that's totally reasonable. And that would, that most of the kiteboarders, some of them, that's what they'd said, there's a few, very few. They like to go into the Clickitap because it's right there between up to the bridge because you get the wind without the wave. There's no chop in there because the sandbar is. But that could be restricted if that's bad for fisheries. That, that seems perfectly reasonable.
So I, I think if it was, the plan was to do it much like what they did at the White Salmon where they dredged out, you know, up into that area where they can put their boats in and then they put all that spoils on top and built it up three feet and then they replanted the entire thing. And so if you replant the entire thing, that's gonna make kiteboarding very difficult versus a sandy beach. So there's some potential conflicts there, but I know, um, the tribe's been talking about it, working on it for at least three years.
Have you had a, have you seen anything?
Uh, we talked about it briefly when I went up in front of the tribal council, uh, and, uh, the, one of the things that the tribes have been doing is talking about all the tribes together purchasing a dredge because all of their institute sites are gonna need dredges. And they were, they were actually talking about, you know, would we be supportive of them purchasing a dredge? Because getting a dredge is actually very difficult because they're all always very busy.
Well, I still maintain, I, I think there's, uh, I think there are, I think you can have a windmill. I think you could do both. I think there's a way that you could do both. That, that's the goal. And I, again, I, I don't want to say, again, we're getting our information secondhand and necessarily the tribe, the fisheries, they're not saying they don't want to find a way or approach at all. They just say these are the things that we're working on. That's, uh, the next meeting, I think, with the Forest Service is in, I think it's late March because that, we, we really saw no reason to meet until they have a meeting with the tribe, the tribal cultural folks to get some sense from them. And so then we're gonna get a check-in because this was just the fisheries. Uh, with them, kind of what their concerns are because the, the land that they're being owned by the Forest Service is federal land. And so they have an obligation and responsibility to consult, uh, with the tribe before even contemplating the action. So.
Yeah, no, all that makes perfect sense. I was just questioning the dredging because, uh, the tribes have a little different idea of dredging than others or where, uh, or where the tailings would go, uh, than necessarily the fishermen. There is a bow ramp down there that we have to take into consideration. And so, uh, was just trying to get an idea. I'm sure whoever's doing it will hopefully work with community partners, uh, but was just trying to get an idea on time.
And that's all I have. Thank you. I, I appreciate your tolerance. Absolutely. That's what we have it for. Uh, getting back to it, uh, any, anything else for the good of the order, um, for updates? Uh. All right. Just wondering the halls. Just bored, just bored. If not, then are you ready? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we still have. Uh, elected officials report. Uh, you, you really want the chairmanship back, don't you?
No.
You were going there. Uh. Prosecutor Pinnell, are you there?
Yes, Chair Anderson. Thank you today. I hope you're doing well. Um, I don't have a lot to report. We, we did have that, um, vehicular homicide trial last week that for three days. Um, unfortunately, the jury came back on a, on the lesser charge of a, a DUI, um, is yet to be sentenced. Uh, we do have an extra week between felony dockets. Um, it's on the first and third Mondays. And so, uh, about every three or four months, um, where there's an extra week in between. So we're trying to catch our breath and catch up with some of our appeal filings, um, moving forward, um, trying to tackle some of the, um, Blake, um, thing. We got a pretty firm handle that we have all the cases with active warrants taken care of. We're just moving into the next phases of initiated conversations with some of the district court folks, um, that, that hasn't been touched at all. Uh, by the years of marijuana convictions that will need to be, uh, vacated in the district courts, uh, going back 30, 40 years on. And there's really, um, we're hoping the legislature, uh, I know that they have some bills that they're discussing on, uh, trying to streamline the process and trying to bring it, uh, more on the state level, especially as to, um, figuring out some sort of funding bureau to deal with the, the refunds and so forth. Luckily, that hasn't been a major issue yet, but, um, uh, uh, you know, we're anticipating at some point, um, it's gonna have to get flushed out. The state's gonna have to provide additional assistance from what they're, uh, doing so far. Um, and then, uh, we're just wrapping up some annual audits for some of our grant funding. Um, and we're still interested in, um, any attorney that wants to join the office, uh, to do, uh, an entry-level possession, um, position with the district court, uh, doing criminal, um, work. Uh, so that's what I know right now. Yeah, I'd be happy to take any questions or anything.
I've got a question. Uh, we have people asking if we could take our masks down when we speak because it's very difficult for people to hear with the mics. Um, that is, from, from what you said in the past, I want to make sure that that is not something that would be allowed according to the governor's recommendation.
Well, it's actually from the health, the state health department on their, um, the latest on their masking, um, framework, which goes back a couple of months. It does, there is no speaker exception for anybody. Um, so, um, you know, that's, that's what it is.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was giving the information that you've stated previously accurately. So thank you.
Yeah, just rely on the information as I understand it from the, um, proclamations and so forth, um, that have been issued that very little people pay attention to at this point.
Okay. Um, any commissioners, any other questions for prosecuting attorney? Uh, do you have anything for executive session?
No, I do not.
Okay. Thank you for your updates, sir. Moving on. We don't have anything else. Is there anything else for the good of the order, gentlemen? Aaron Dunn, I would entertain a motion. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting. We have no workshop schedule.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to adjourn until next Tuesday. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.